Good evening and welcome to the November 12th, 2025 council meeting for the Village of Holly. Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbrunner?
Here.
Wendell?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Cascola?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Kyre?
Here.
Brandon?
Here. We have a quorum. If you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This brings us to the approval of our consent agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Village Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed separately immediately after Consent Agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Lisa, can you please read the Consent Agenda?
A, Agenda Approval. B, Consideration of the Approval of the Village Council Minutes of October 14th, 2025. C, Consideration of the Approval of Updates to the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Fee Schedule. D, Consideration by Council of Resolution 2025-35 Updating the Village of Holly's Park Hours. E, Consideration of Approval of Warrant 2025-011 in the Amount of $511,723.33.
In regards to Item A for Agenda Approval. On Item... New Item C. Tim, can you give us a little rundown of what we learned this evening?
Yes, so after discussing this with the Village Attorney, we have the recommendation to postpone Item C for additional Attorney Review just in regards to our legal abilities to approve without items being specifically addressed within the TIF Plan.
Is that Item C for the Consent Agenda?
No, for new business, I'm sorry. Again, this is based on the discussions that occurred at the DDA Meeting on Monday. We always knew this one was going to be contingent upon what happened at the meeting, but based on those discussions and the discussion with the Village Attorney, we were recommended to postpone to allow the Village Attorney to spend some more time looking at PA 57, the TIF Plan, and some of the budget amendments to so that we are making a legal and informed decision.
And what Council can do in between now and then is familiarize yourself with the TIF Plan. It is located right on the DDA's website. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To what? Hold on, motion to what?
To postpone Item C on the agenda.
Okay, and then, so we have a motion by Ryan and a second by Weinbrunner. Lisa, call the roll, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I would like to pull two things down.
Okay, which ones?
I'd like to pull Item C and Item E down.
C and E?
Yes, please.
C, old C will become new C.
C.
And old E will become new D. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell, we have a second by Kyre. That was you, right?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Presentation, okay, this brings us to tonight's presentations. We're doing a department recognition. So this evening, we come together to recognize the incredible dedication, strength, teamwork of our Village of Holly staff. This past year has not been an easy one. It has been a time of transition, growth, and change. A year that asked every one of us to dig deep, stay steady, continue showing up for this community even when the path wasn't simple. Through it all, our staff has not only stayed the course, but has risen to the occasion in extraordinary ways. They have met every challenge with professionalism, creativity, and heart. They've embraced transparency, accountability, and innovation, and they've continued to serve our residents with compassion and pride. I want to acknowledge Councilman Wendell for spearheading this recognition tonight. His idea reflects something I think we all feel deeply, that every department, every staff member, every person who keeps this village running deserves our sincere gratitude. To our first responders who serve not only our own residents, but our neighboring communities as well, thank you for your bravery, calm, and courage under pressure. To our Public Works team who keep our village safe, beautiful, and functioning in every kind of weather, thank you for your reliability and pride in your work. To our administrative staff who carry out the daily operations with patience, adaptability, and integrity, thank you for leading with both heart and skill. Each of you plays a vital role in what makes Holly strong. This recognition is more than words on a plaque. It is a reflection of our appreciation, our respect, and our gratitude for all that you do, often quietly and behind the scenes, but always with immense impact. So with that, we would like to present these tokens of appreciation. Councilman Wendell, who initiated this effort, will begin by reading the plaque honoring our fire department.
Jeremy Watson, will you please come to the podium?
They've, so I think all the departments have kind of identified people that they want to represent, if that's all right.
Yeah, that's fine. It's my pleasure to give you guys this on behalf of the village with our deepest gratitude for your bravery, dedication, and in calm and face a crisis, times of change, challenge. You have served our community, our neighboring ones with true courage and compassion. With sincere appreciation, the Village of Holly 2025. Thank you guys so much. Tim, you want to get pictures?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You should always get pictures.
Just one more in the middle. Yeah, one more in the middle.
Now we are.
Are we all supposed to be in the picture?
Yeah.
One, two, three, all right, good.
I expect copies of those pictures to be sent to me.
Me too, please.
Councilman Weinbrunner, will you please read the plaque for our police department? And if you want to go ahead and just take the mic at the podium. Up there if you like, yeah.
Yeah, I probably should do that.
We live and learn.
Yeah, well, I'm beginning.
And the representatives from the police department?
PD?
There you go.
We have a new SRO to introduce as well.
Grab the microphone so you can hold it.
So the only reason, thank you, Your Honor.
Right, right.
The only reason.
Let me tell you, this guy.
The only reason I'm up here with them is I just wanted everybody to know, I told these guys they're getting an award for the best facial hair on the ground. I'll be in the back.
Don't drop.
I won't drop. I'd like to present this award, the Distinguished Service Award, to the Holly Police Department with the honor and appreciation for your bravery, integrity, and unwavering commitment to protecting our community and those around us. Your strength and your professionalism shine brightest when Holly needs you the most. With sincere appreciation, Village of Holly 2025.
Wait, don't get it, get in there, we'll adjust.
I need, yeah, I need. Losing one, all right, ready, one, two, three, gotcha.
Councilwoman Cole, will you please read the plaque for our Department of Public Works?
Absolutely.
Ryan, why are you turning red?
I'm excited to give you guys this award because I feel like your department doesn't necessarily get seen. You're in the middle of the night, you're working overnight in the worst weather sometimes, and we truly appreciate you. This Distinguished Service Award, the Holly Department of Public Works, with heartfelt thanks for your creativity, your reliability, and your tireless work behind the scenes, you have gone above and beyond to keep Holly safe, beautiful, and moving forward through every challenge. With sincere appreciation, the Village of Holly 25. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, Brian, thank you.
Sit, kneel, stand, sit, kneel, stand. And Councilman Ryan, will you please read the plaque honoring our administrative staff? And Lisa?
Lisa, I have to take pictures.
Good reason, good, no, grab the phone from him, somebody grab his phone. Lisa's getting called to the hot seat.
I thought Tim warned you.
All right, so with gratitude and respect for your leadership, perseverance, and grace through a time of great transition, your dedication to transparency, teamwork, and service has strengthened the foundation of our village. With sincere appreciation, Village Council.
Well, we gotta get one with Tim in.
Come on over, Tim.
Jeremy, grab his phone.
All right, our next presentation will be by John from Municipal Analytics.
When to introduce or discuss?
Yeah, so at the last couple council meetings, we've discussed, you know, this as in theory, we, you know, formalized a little bit more how we were going to move forward on this, and as promised, John is here to kind of talk, talk through what we've discussed in the past in a little bit more detail. And one of your new business items is the approval of the contract or the proposed contract that John and I have worked on.
Good evening all. John Kazor with Municipal Analytics, I know it struggles with the last name. And I'll say usually when I show up and there's a bunch of police in the back, there's something controversial on the agenda, but that wasn't the case tonight. And I'll also say, DPW folks, I blame a lot for the problems that we have in government because they do a good job keeping things working that people don't see what's actually going on behind the scenes. The water systems, the sewer systems, all of that are maintained by people who are putting in a lot of hours. And until something breaks, nobody knows they're there. And that's the point of a lot of these services, is that they're just there and they're provided. But when they do break, you all hear about it, and so it's to them that I give a lot of credit for keeping things going. So, you can applaud. Just a quick introduction, again, John Kazor, Municipal Analytics. We're a firm in Ann Arbor, Michigan. I've been doing consulting with local governments for about 30 years, started at the MML back in 95. In those years, I put together about 120 models of various sorts for many different local governments, primarily in Michigan. And we focus primarily on forecasting numbers that help make decisions. So people in this room have, are asked often to make complicated decisions with very little information, or you have to dig for the information. So we want to try to make that easier so that your decision-making is clearer and more transparent. We use a lot of information that we gather over the years to pull this together. I just want to talk about, go ahead to the next slide, some of the issues that are currently facing Holly. The charts in the upper right, I noticed on your website, you are subscribing to Munetrix. I don't know if that's through SEMCOC or if you have your own subscription, but you have that? So you have access to some information to compare yourself to other communities and to look at your own data. So the chart on the top right just shows that your overall general fund expenditures have gone up and down like they normally do, and currently they're kind of high relative to what they've been. The bottom chart just shows that your fund balance, that's the general fund, fund balance, is getting close to the low end. So we want to make sure we address some of those. Some of what's driving this is you have a structural deficit, which means your ongoing costs are greater than your predictable recurring revenues. So trying to fix that is an issue that the village wants to tackle. There's a concern of deferring capital. It's okay to defer capital investment sometimes, but if you do it over and over and over again, those capital projects just get more expensive, and the poor DPW guys have to work even harder to keep things from breaking. Your per capita safety, public safety costs, and I'll show you in the next slide, are relatively high. That doesn't mean anything necessarily, so we'd want to look at why that is. Your water and sewer rates, there's a concern that you are charging the same rates to the village customers as well as to those in the township. And there's a lot of reasons to have a different rate for customers that aren't in the community that's hosting and actually providing the service. Your pension and OPEB funding are a concern. Obviously, trying to get those up is difficult, but we want to make sure that we're keeping the village in a good position for those to stay out of the bad graces of the state. There is concern about limited transparency into the village finances, so we want to make sure that we can find a way to open it up and make things available to people and be consistent with whomever we're talking to. And then there's a consideration of change in the form of government from village to city, which is a big question, and a lot of information has to go into know whether that's the right decision or not. So I said, we look at the costs. So on the left, we have, and this again is from SEMCOC, comparing the Village of Holly to the other villages in Oakland, Macomb, St. Clair, and Livingston Counties. Your general government per capita cost is relatively low, and on the right side, we see that the per capita cost for public safety is relatively high. And again, I don't know if that's a good thing, a bad thing, it's just what it is. So we want to make sure we understand why that is and make sure it makes sense. So where we're at right now, the village is trying to find a fix. So I know that you adopted this year a special assessment for public safety. Wasn't the most favorable or easy thing to do, but it got done. So now you actually have generated some revenue to pay for those critical services. It's time limited, acknowledging that this is probably not what you want to do forever. So trying to find a permanent solution is good. You're also looking at the city would question, which would annex additional properties, bring them in, increase your tax base, which is another option. So again, we want to look at that and make sure it makes sense. There's this big issue of priorities, and when I met with the staff, it was really a question of where do we begin? What's the most important? Do we fund capital first? Do we fund increasing our funding of the pension, reduce the liability? What else do we need to do? So trying to understand what those choices are and prioritizing them is critical. We also want to look at the big picture across operations so that you can see where things are one relative to the other. And when you're making a decision in one area, how does that affect another area? And then what do all these options mean? How do they impact ratepayers, customers, et cetera, services, and all that? And then we want to make sure that we're not eroding trust in the municipal leaders. We want to have trust, we want to have transparency, so that's what we're going to work towards. So what we propose doing is helping to identify your financial priorities. That's not us telling you what to do, but working with the village to figure out what those are and then to put a plan together to see if we can actually fund it. We want to align expenditures with revenues. First, the other way too, revenues with expenditures. If we look at it and say your operations are as lean as they can be, but the revenues still aren't sufficient, then we need to find other revenues. If your revenues are tapped out, we need to find a way to reduce expenditures. It's a mathematical question. We also want to look at developing strategies to address your financial obligations, debt and liability for OPEB and pension primarily. And we want to make sure you have adequate reserves, that's fund balance in your governmental funds, cash reserves in your utility funds, to make sure there's cash there. And I talked a lot to communities about why we want cash, especially in the utility side. It's to take advantage of grants, it's to respond to emergencies, and it's to avoid debt if you can. Can't always do it. We want to look at spending trends, revenue trends. What's happening, why is it happening, what's going on, what's your tax base doing? We want to understand that so we can project forward. We also want to look at your utility rates, put something together that's more equitable and sustainable to make sure that you can fund what you need to fund, operations, debt, and capital, with the customers that you have. And we also want to take a longer-term viewpoint, going from a one-year budget to a 10- to 20-year forecast, so we can start looking way out in the future and see where things are going. And then we want to look at the impact of changing form of government. There's one-time costs, there's a returning cost, there's revenues, there's a whole lot of implications one way or the other. We want to make sure it makes sense, and we want to understand the impacts on the ratepayers, the customers, the taxpayers, so that we know who's being impacted in different ways. So we do all this through a financial model, big spreadsheet. What I am proposing for Holly is a little bit unique in that I want to take what I usually do in three different projects and combine them into one. And the reason for that is, A, it's more efficient, B, time is of the essence right now to get something done. We really want to look comprehensively at the village finances, not sidle things. And I think you're going to need all this information to make those big decisions across operations. So I think there's a benefit in doing that. What we will do is we'll pull in all the information that's shown here, your historical revenues and expenditures, your cash balances, your debt schedules, your capital needs, your tax base. All this information goes in there, and then we start analyzing things. We look back and we try to figure out where things are going, going forward. When all that's come together in a spreadsheet, then we get the outputs that come out of that. And we go to the next slide. Oh, those are out of order, okay. This was supposed to be before the last one. Why use a strategic planning model? It's really looking at making decisions. So how do we look at all of these different options and figure out what to do with them? How do things like budgets and policies and legislation from the state or federal government impact operations, impact your budget? We want to be able to test scenarios. What if we look at a 2% wage increase, a 4% wage increase? What if we invest capital in one area or another? What if we pay for that capital with debt or with cash? What does all that mean? We want to look at your current budget and then see how it might impact future budgets. So if you're adding a staff person, that's not a one-time cost, that's a recurring cost that we want to make sure you can afford year after year. And as I mentioned, we want to look at expanding the horizon from one year to 10 or 20 years. We will build the 20-year model. I don't rely a lot on 20-year forecasts, but, you know, 10 years, five years really helps understand where things are going, so we want to be making decisions longer term. And then economic uncertainty, the more we go out, the harder it is to predict, but we still want to have some way of looking forward. It's not a crystal ball, it's just looking at the numbers and trying to understand where things are going. Like I said, I've been doing this for 30 years, so I've got a pretty good handle on it, but I haven't been exactly right every time. The reason is because I usually present a forecast that all of you don't like. So that means that decisions have to be made and something has to change. So that's why we do this, to give you the information so you can make the change, to make the forecast what you want it to be. Also, we want to make a single source of financial information. I've been in a lot of communities where one financial forecast is presented to the bond rating agency, and a completely different one is presented at labor negotiations, another one is presented at Budget Time. We want one that everybody sees. And again, that works on the transparency, the trustworthiness of the government. We're not, it's not smoke and mirrors, it's just one number that we're looking at. I'm going to put it all together so you can see the big picture. And it also supports any grants or military requests that you might need in the future. Now we can go to the next slide. Okay, so what comes out of it? The way that we do these, there's all these worksheets that have lots of detail, and then we boil it all down to a dashboard or some simpler charts to take all those numbers, put them into a picture. So what we want to look at is this extended horizon. We want to save some time with your staff because now we can work with one spreadsheet and not multiples. For you, it helps to focus the agenda, ask clearer questions, get clearer answers. The analytic ability of the administration gets better because now they have a tool that links everything together. This is something that can be updated and should be updated every year, if not more frequently, by staff. If staff can't do it, we can do it. We're also there to help troubleshoot. If ever you've adopted somebody else's spreadsheet, you know there's usually some problem that you can't figure out, but the person that wrote it can. Again, we want to look at the consistent source of financial forecasts across all the different times you're trying to share that with people. Because we're going to pull in information from lots of different sources, and we're going to solicit input of staff and policymakers, we get more acceptance because more people have participated in it. And then we could do lots of what if, what if this, what if that. We'll run multiple scenarios to figure things out on rates, on tax rates, et cetera, so that we know we've explored lots of different options. And then why do we do this? Saving time and reducing mistakes is one thing. We get a comprehensive view, which you don't currently have. You get best practices. Like I said, I've been doing this for a while, so I can look at what other communities have done, and I can pull that information in or share strategies that I've learned in other communities, and that helps you to take leaps, leapfrog over some of the issues that you're dealing with. Can be used over and over. And again, it gets you to the water and sewer rates that you need to actually keep water and sewer operations funded and not fall behind in the capital needs there. The next slide. Here's a quick example of what we did in Ypsilanti. I've been doing Ypsilanti's model on and off for a number of years, 20 years, 25 years now. On the left was their baseline forecast. So this was, let's assume things continue as they are. Revenues come in as they are, expenditures continue with inflationary adjustments. And clearly, that blue line is the fund balance. And what it shows is if they continue as they are, they will eventually run out of money in about six years. What we did is we ran through multiple scenarios. When I gave this presentation to their council, there was about six more slides that went through all this, but I boiled it down here. In the end, we said, if you follow the strategy on the right, you can balance your budget. Not just this year, but stabilize it. And for them, because they are hosting a state university, they get fire protection grant money from the state that has not been fully funded for decades, but there's been pressure on the legislature to fully fund it. So if they were able to get that and the county public safety mileage renewed, they would get about $750,000 more per year. They were subsidizing their garbage fund from the general fund. They could raise their garbage rates and not subsidize from the general fund. They had the option of a headly override, which would generate about $1 million in additional revenue. Now, none of these things are easy, I'm not saying they're easy, but these are, this is the pathway to follow. I'm not saying they're easy, but these are, this is the pathway to follow. And then, start looking for what happens when they've got some debt paid off in the future years, that'll free up $1 million a year. So, this model, again, it's shortened to a five- or six-year horizon, but it goes out further than that. We're just trying to find a pathway for them to get to a stable budget. That's the sort of thing we would do here as well. On the next slide, this is a typical dashboard screenshot from a water and sewer rate study. And what we're looking at, and when we do one of these, is we pull this information together, your operating budget, capital budget, your debt, all of your customer billing data, your CIP, and then we look at your funding strategies, your rate structure, make sure it makes sense, make sure it's equitable, and then we look at your policies. If you don't have policies, we can recommend policies to keep the finances stable there. We put all this together, again, there are thousands and thousands of rows of data that pull into these sheets, but we've got a fairly stable rate increase in the upper-left chart. We've got revenues close to expenditures, a little bit higher, because we need to build some cash reserves, but this is what we've got now going forward, and when this is adopted, this is another model that this community can use over and over to update. And then, one final picture here. I find it very helpful to look at where your taxable value history has been. This is a pretty typical snapshot. This is another village, Village of Milford, where before the Great Recession in 2008, they had a tax growth rate, a tax base growth rate of 5.6% per year. Then, they had twelve years of lower taxable value than they did in 2008. That's what it took for them to come out of the Great Recession, twelve years. Now, they're back to where they were in 2009, and since they've started recovering in the middle of that dip, they've been growing at 4.78%, which is not bad. And I was just looking at another community today, they went down pretty fast, and then they stayed pretty low for a while. They were at 1% or less per year growth for four or five years. Took them fifteen years to get out of it, and now they're at 6.5% growth. So, they just boomed. So, it's interesting to see what's driving that and help understand how do we predict the future based on that information. You can also see in this chart that on the right side, the light green bar is quite a bit higher than the orange. That is the assessed value, or state equalized value, relative to the taxable value, which means if we had another Great Recession, there's a bigger cushion there, because as values go down, your taxable value keeps going up until it hits your SEV. So, this is what saved a lot of communities during the Great Recession, was that you didn't have an immediate drop in your tax revenue. Your tax base went down, but a lot of communities didn't see the same decrease in their taxable value and revenue. So, that was a saving grace for a lot of communities. Looking at where we're going from here, like I showed you on the Ipsalani example, we first build a status quo or baseline model, and then we start playing with what happens if we do this, what happens if we do that. We look at different aspects, whether it's staffing, capital, debt, tax rates, et cetera, to try to make sure we've got something that works for the community, and then we try to improve what we can. And then, we just start testing things over and over again. So, lots of scenario testing to see what works and what doesn't, and that helps narrow down your choices. And if it is something that has to go to the voters, a debt millage, or a special levy, or something like that, at least we know we've looked at all the options, and we know that this is the one that seems to be the best, if that's the case, that's the direction it's going. Cityhood is the next question, and as you probably know, this is a big question. What we would do in this case is we would build that baseline model with the village status, and then we would look at what would be different if this was a city. So, staffing requirements, there'd have to be a little bit more staffing. We would look at your one-time expenses and then ongoing expenses. What would happen to your tax base? If you're going to change your boundaries, how much more taxable value would that add? What would that do to your water sewer rates, if you're bringing more people in to recharge village rates instead of township rates? So, we want to look at all of that and understand. And then, we want to look at who's impacted how. Current village residents, current village businesses, folks that are currently in the township that would be annexed into a new city, how is it all impacting them? Tax base, utility rates, et cetera, levels of service. And then, what happens to your tax base, or to your tax rate? What is going to be needed to actually fund a city operation? That would have to be decided as well. Obviously, your charter, probably go for a 20-mil maximum charter, which is what most cities have, but maybe you only need 12 mils, or 10. I don't know. We'd have to do the math to figure that out. But we don't want to say, "Oh, let's become a city and charge 20 mils," when you don't need it. So, we want to make sure you're only levying what's necessary to cover the costs. And then, using this going forward, we would train your staff on how to use it. Staff changes, so we're always available to answer questions in the future if needed. Like I said, it's a twenty-year model that we would build. You'd probably focus on five years, with a little bit of a look to ten years now and then, but that means the model's going to be good for a long time to use. And it's also part of the budgeting process. So, it's helpful, as you're building your budget, you throw the budget into the model, and you say, "Okay, now we know the impact on this year, but what does that do for the next five years? Are we overcommitting? Do we need to look at our tax rates again two years from now to make sure we're okay?" And then, again, communicating the plan to your constituents, so there's transparency and people understand what you're doing and why you're doing it. That's the proposal. The written proposal that we submitted has three options. We can, well, we can do each of these projects individually. I, again, think that there's a lot more value in doing it all at once, there's some urgency. I've reduced the price quite a bit because of efficiency, and just because I think it's the right thing to do, to get Holly to where you need to be. So, if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, John.
I've just thrown a lot at you.
Questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I think on the last slide it said we provided a copy. Do we own it? Is it all editable? Will we own it?
Yes. It's a spreadsheet, it's yours.
It's not locked or anything?
No.
Any competitors, or why should we pick you over, let's say, our accounting firm? What do you do differently that our accounting firm's not going to do?
I don't know what your accounting firm would do.
Okay, well, what would a normal accounting firm do? Why should we go with you then?
My, the models that I've built tend to be more detailed, and I put more time into it. The folks that I've met on the CPA firms that do this are usually the folks that are coming in and don't really have a lot of experience. They're given a template model, they are told, "Go to the audit statements, put in these numbers," and it kicks out a number. I'm going to be delivering hands-on, real-world experience, thirty years of, "Here's an example here, here's an example there." We can try things.
So, circle with questions? Yep. Thank you. Okay, I'm with you going then.
Go ahead.
The hands-on approach, so how fine-tuned are we looking at? So, for instance, are we talking, each budget line we can go in and adjust, our salaries, we can compare overtime versus hiring more people and not paying overtime?
Yes.
Okay. What else do I have on here?
Let me just back up and say, there's one more level deeper than what I'm proposing that one could do, which is actually build a personnel forecasting model, which goes into every single aspect of compensation, which I don't think you need. We can work at a higher level. But that's really useful for communities that are struggling, and they really need to find money in their negotiations with labor unions.
Because one of the things I'd like to be able to identify is, if we're paying overtime because we're understaffed, what does it look like if we just hire more people, so we're not paying overtime?
And the benefits that go with that.
Exactly.
Right.
And as far as, I don't know, I have one other question. But I'll be very interested.
We'll move on for now.
I have a question. I know out in our community, there's a lot of questions about cityhood, and a lot of concerns that if we hire an outside company to come in and give us information about cityhood, that they're just going to rubber stamp and give us the information we want to see. Would you provide, like, sources on where you got that information from, so that way it builds the trust with the community?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I did a study for Pentwater two or three years ago. All the sources were cited. I reached out to all of the villages that had recently made the move to cityhood and got all their financials, talked to them about what went well, what didn't go well, or the hiccups they had. So, all that's documented, and we would do the same. I am not going to rubber stamp anything, just so you know. I think my integrity, I value that, and I'm an independent, so...
I just know there's...
If I get pressure to do one thing, I'm going to push back and do what I think is right.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel?
One more.
Jim?
So, as far as wastewater rates go, like pilot programs, so that's one of the things I found when payment in lieu of taxes, when I'm looking up water and sewer things. Is that something that you can be proactive to and say, "You're not doing this, but you could be doing this"?
Yes. So, I would look at how much money the utility funds are paying back to the general fund, and a pilot is one way of doing that. So, you're essentially saying the utilities are taking value away from the city, or there's a private developer that's doing that, and you negotiated a payment in lieu of taxes. The other strategy is a cost allocation, where you say, X dollars or X percent of time of administration, and auditing services and all that is dedicated towards water sewer. So, let's recoup those dollars back into the general fund, because the water and sewer should be funding their own operations. Yes, that would be an option.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This brings us to public comment. Members of the audience may address counsel on any item not on the agenda. Those addressing counsel will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. After each agenda item, there will be an additional two-minute public comment period to speak to that item before counsel votes. Counsel will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at this time. Prior to addressing counsel, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. Any public comment? Cheryl Lynn.
I sent you a copy in the mail. Did everybody get it? If not, I don't want to take either of my time. My name is Cheryl Lynn Everly. I'm from 314 Hadley Street, and I want to talk to you about the Mill Pond. I just want to kind of give you a brief overview. On June 25th, the balance in the dam restoration fund was $150,000. We were delighted to know that, because that gave us something to work with going forward. But after learning of the imminent drawdown of Stiff's Mill Pond by Eagle, the village formed a Mill Pond Committee to explore options for restoring the pond. Ryan W. from the Oakland County Water Resources Commission attended an early meeting and explained the process for establishing a legal lake level and having them, the county, assume responsibility for the dam going forward. A key point here is the work the Water Resources Commission executes for the studies, like LiDAR mapping to determine what the shoreline should be, and those studies are going to need to be paid for. We volunteers who went out to gather the petition signatures were told that the dam restoration fund would be available to cover those costs as much as possible. August of 2025, you, the village council, approved the Mill Pond Committee's recommendation to pursue the county lake level option with the Water Resource Commission. Volunteers gathered a good number of signatures with the assurance to the signatories that the dam restoration fund will be available, and hopefully enough, to pay for the Water Resource Commission studies. Now, we're up to September of 2025. The village loses its legal battle in Lansing. So, by October, our dam restoration fund balance has gone from $150,000 to $115,000, and as a resident of the Mill Pond, we ain't any closer than when we started. November of 2025, this latest Mill Pond Committee meeting. DPW Director Clausen announced to us that we are now seeking bids from at least one engineering firm, CEC in Ann Arbor, for a proposal that includes a document exploration with Eagle, environmental studies, and a plan for the best route going forward. I was in the audience, and I asked why, and the explanation was, "So, we'll have a Plan B if Oakland County doesn't work out." But then, his next statement was that Mr. Price wanted us to be sure that the village does not want to be in the dam business in the future. So, I'm confused, and here's my problem. If we know that we're going to need every bit of that last $115,000 in the dam restoration fund to cover the cost of the Water Resource Commission studies, and we know we don't want to be in the dam business in the future, why would we spend one penny on another engineering firm, an engineering study, that's not going to get us any closer to being with the county? We have an engineering report from ROW that was dated August 10th of 2021. It was prepared after the work was done wrong on the earth and dam.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn.
Could I have an extension, please?
I'll make a motion to give her an extension.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell, we have a second by Weinbrunner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you. It's my understanding from some engineers that that report from 2021 is still valid, because the rules for dams have not changed legally in the Legislature of Michigan. As someone who has been following this process with the microscope, here are my recommendations to get this project on track, in sync with the Oakland County Water Resources Commission, and in alignment with our promises to the people who signed the petition, just like the Lacy's that were in my kitchen tonight. I want you, as the council, to put a lock on the dam restoration fund. No expenditures without your express approval, and I would expect that you would not be spending any money that didn't get us closer to being with the Oakland County Water Resource Commission. The topic of the dam should be an item of old business at every council meeting. This is the third consecutive month that you've met, and you have not had a report, it's not been on your agenda. I think we should require staff to ensure that a representative of the County Resource Commission, preferably the young man we've worked with, attends all future Mill Pond Committee meetings.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn.
If you can't be there, we need to do our best. Finally, I just have one more thing. I would like to be appointed to the Mill Pond Committee in the capacity of secretary, so that she would have minutes, and that we would have some professional accountability for this endeavor. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. That brings us to New Business. Lisa, will you please read item A of New Business?
Consideration of Resolution 2025-34 Confirming the Village President's Appointment of Kirk Cross to the Village of Holly Construction Board of Appeals with a Term Ending December 31st, 2028.
Do I have a first to consider item A of New Business?
I'll make the motion to consider item A of New Business.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell, we have a second by Weinbrunner. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, discussion?
Is Mr. Cross here tonight?
I don't think so. No. No. Mr. Cross is on Planning Commission.
And again, this commission is just, they just meet when there's a problem with the building code, correct him?
Yes. If they want to request a, if they're appealing a decision that was made by a building official that they feel like it was against a wrong interpretation of the code, they can take it to the CBA and organize. This is our newly formed organization. We've been remiss in not having it previously. And so, this will be our fourth member, I believe.
I think so, yeah. I think this will be the fourth. We're aiming for five.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, everybody knew what it was going for.
Yeah, this is part of us reinventing the wheel, just something that was not done before that should have been, but we're doing it now.
Better late than ever.
Yep.
Can you just give us maybe some of the points on, like, his resume, on why we feel like he would be appropriate for this committee?
I'm slacking and did not bring his resume with me because he was...
You're fired.
I know. I know. I was going to, I was going to ask you, since you said I'm planning...
He's a tentative individual, ask pertinent questions. I think he can make good decisions, so not just what I agree with, just good decisions overall, and listens to experts that we have there, too, so I think he has research.
He's in the construction industry, too. It sounds like he's always working on new projects.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Pascal?
Yes.
Kair?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you to Mr. Cross. To everybody else, we're still looking for one more member for our construction board of appeals.
I'm on too many committees already.
Lisa, will you please read item B?
Consideration by village council to enter into a consultant agreement with municipal analytics in preparing a 20-year strategic financial planning tool, including any, including all primary governmental funds, a water and sewer utility rate model, and a cityhood financial analysis. Municipal analytics shall further provide services related to alternate revenue sources, opportunities for cost reduction or cost sharing with other municipalities, target fund balance and cash reserve policies, and strategic options to improve village financial sustainability. This consultant fee shall be in, shall be in the not to exceed amount of $22,000.
Okay, this was tonight's presentation. Do I have a first to consider item B of new business?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Cascola. We have a second by Wendell. Any public comment on this item? Cheryl Lynn?
Cheryl Lynn Everly from 314 Hadley Street, and hallelujah. I just think this is a fabulous idea. Don't take the $22,000 out of the dam restoration fund.
I make a motion to pull out of the restoration fund.
But we've needed this for so long. I've had a personal experience in the past where I took over an organization that was defunct, and the person in front of me said if they were still standing in two years, it would be a miracle. Well, I had the advantage of consultant services like this for five years, and that organization is still here, and that was 10, 15 years ago. So you can't find any way out of the swamp by yourself. Tim doesn't have the staff. Go for it.
Thank you, Cheryl Lynn. And thank you, applause. Any further public comment? Hearing none. I see somebody. Psych. Name and address, please.
Gian Vanzelti, 15226 Weller Court. I did address it at the last meeting that I wanted to see the tiers of like, maybe let's break it down, but I did read the detailed agenda online, which I recommend all the people at home look at that because the agenda that we receive in the evening is good, but the detailed one online is better. And after reading that, I do agree with spending the $22,000 upfront because the breakdown was like $36,000 if you broke it into segments. So I also support this plan, and I'm excited to see what the report says. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, discussion?
If we approved it, when would you start?
John, would you like to come back up to the
Sorry for the hot seat, bud.
I don't mind. If approved tonight and I get a signed agreement, I would prepare a long list of information that I would request to begin the study, probably this week. It might be early next week. But as soon as we start getting that, and I encourage my clients to send me as it comes in rather than wait till it's all available, we start building the model. So we start looking at the information. I will download five years of financial statements from the state's website, which I've already done, and look at some of the issues, looking at some of the information in your agenda items tonight. I have some questions for the administration about some of your current financial strategies. So we start asking questions and moving forward. So practically immediately.
And then is it also like an hourly rate, or is it like a
It is a flat fee. We will, we will blow through the $22,000 very quickly. So I, and again, there's a lot of value in this for the village. I'm offering it a discounted rate, and by combining it, we can save even more money. That's why we're doing it this way. Our costs will certainly be more than that, but we're willing to do it for 22.
I appreciate it. That's what I was asking, you know, if it was hourly or anything like that.
Not to exceed.
And then is it, is it better to do a 10-year, or is it better to do a 20-year outlook, prediction?
For us, building the spreadsheet 20 years is no more time, so we build the 20-year. We're going to focus on the more immediate term. The 20 years, if you've already built a new village hall, but if you needed a new, you know, water treatment plant or something, that's 15 years down the road, we wouldn't want to know that now so we can start anticipating what it's going to take to get there.
Counsel? Jim?
Time's up, Jim.
May I speak now?
Yes.
So there was some concerns with our audit previously, with the previous administration being slow to deliver information. And should this get passed, if there is any delays on our staff, is that something you feel comfortable still coming back to us, emailing us and saying your staff is not
Sure, if you want to be involved in that way, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. My job is to get it done and to get it done right, so.
I think we've got a lot of things coming up in time.
You have, you have limited staff resources. I understand that, and you're probably in the audit process right now.
That is one thing I wanted to point out when we were talking about timelines and such, because, you know, a lot of this is going to be working with Lisa on these things, and she is in the middle of the audit. She's buried in the audit right now. Her and Tessa, that's what they primarily do. So we would do as much groundwork, you know, John and I, as far as, you know, like, get him all the information that I can provide, and then when Lisa and Tessa have gotten, you know, through more of the audit process and involve them, you know, with their specific numbers, you know, that I wouldn't be able to provide, I think that would be, just that would be the only time considered constraint that we'd have right now because we need to get through this audit.
I just hate for our residents to find out six months later that there was something going on for five months, and then we're five months behind. So it just
No, we want to keep it moving. And ideally, we would get this done in time for you to be working within it in your next budget cycle. That's, that's the goal.
To back pack on that, like, you are looking at three to four months that it would take before we would get
Yes, yes.
And for staff, we are currently working with a firm for rig water rate, water rate studies. How does that impact what we're going to be doing with them? And we just stop paying them?
So I haven't, so I don't know what the actual, like, existing Plant Moran water sewer relationship is, like what that contract looks like. And so we have to, like, reevaluate it. Obviously, if this meets our criteria and our needs, then we would, we wouldn't be doing anything further with that on that particular section of how we're utilizing them.
Because looking through this, I think we need to be able to justify everything because we're going to sue, if we can't justify it. There's no, there's no numbers backing it up. There's a problem. So we need, we need someone to do it.
Could we potentially, because we already have that in contractual with Plant Moran, and say that this works for us, basically pay for this out of the contractual, which we've already set a budget for?
We would have to look at what that actual contract looks like. That wasn't a contract that I executed as far as for that portion of it. It's something that's been legacy. So we'd have to look at how that looks, you know, what the termination rules would be.
So then do we want to approve this on a contingency that we can cancel Plant Moran's contract? Because I would hate to be double billed.
Well, what Plant Moran is providing is completely separate, like, as far as
They do a rig water study for us, though. So if that's built into the contract, I would hate to be billed, have an active contract for that, that we say, "No, we're not going to fulfill our terms. We're not going to pay you."
Lisa, do you have any information on the contract for that one?
I don't, we don't.
So, yeah, we have to review that one. I haven't, again, that was all legacy stuff that, you know, and they were mostly providing us hourly bills. Like, when they were to do that, or do any additional work like that, it was at an hourly rate. It wasn't like a contracted fee. So when Brian from them would come in, they would give us, they would charge us for his time, not based on a, like, this is a flat rate, for example.
May I ask a question, Mr. Diller?
Yeah.
What's your take? Should we worry about a contract with Plant Moran?
I don't, without having the contract in front of me, it's awfully hard to answer. If you, if you wish to build yourself, you know, an escape hatch, for lack of a better term, you can always, you know, add some language which says, "To the extent this is not already covered," or, I mean, whatever, whatever you're hoping to achieve.
And I'll just say, I think a difference between what I'm proposing and offering and Plant is they're doing the work. And again, I know they work at a much higher level than I do. I would be giving you the tool, and that's yours to use. So that's the difference.
I would just hate for us to have a contract in place that said we want
And that's a valid question, and I support exploring that before you commit more funds.
Right.
I also, I mean, if we're talking a three to four month timeline, that's going to take us into March, which is our budget sessions anyway. So that's when we would be budgeting for Plant Moran at that point, if we were doing a contractual thing. I don't, I don't think it's going to overlap timeline-wise.
Depends on how our contract was. What if it was like a three-year contract that we're in the middle of, or a five-year, or whatever.
Right.
Looking at the
But if we're doing an hourly rate, it's
It's not a contract.
You use it or don't.
Yeah, I need to review it, but looking at the bills, the only bills that I've seen for that since I've been here, and at least correct me if I'm wrong, have been just hourly rates. So I think my assumption is, you know, again, we were already talking water sewer rate studies when I arrived, so I think any additional things that we were doing with them have been at an hourly rate.
Are they currently working on those water and sewer rates right now?
Nothing besides for what we've already done with the finance committee that we've asked. And we honestly, like, one of the reasons we included this in there is because we haven't really been happy with the results of the information we've been getting from that. So that is a reason that when we talked about this, we said, he mentioned that, and we said, that is a hot topic within the community, and, you know, we'd like another
I think we get a lot of good in the water rates person, looking.
So something that could be built into the motion would be pending that there is not a conflicting contract, et cetera. Rest in motion.
I think that suffices. Everyone understands.
Yeah, I won't be offended if the scope has to change, just communicate with me.
My only thing is that he's doing it for a set rate, so whether or not we have the water on there with him or not with him, we're still paying the same amount. So what's the difference?
Yeah, the discount is rather extraordinary.
So, I mean, we're not saving money if we don't have him do the water.
Well, if we did
Because
adjusted the financial forecasting and cityhood, it would be $16,000 versus removing $18,500 from the water rate.
But then it would
So it'd be less in the bundle.
A lot of that discount might disappear, right?
Well, going off the cost of over here, that doesn't include the discount. Where is that? $34,500? So
Right.
Before the
So what, what I think, if I can just address some of the concerns. So if Plant is working on a study now for your rates for '26, '27, that, that's what I would be working on. If they're working on current rates, that's a different question. But if you are in a contractual relationship with them that is for a time period, then obviously we want to make sure you can get out of that, or we revise what we do. I just want to make sure we give you the right thing for the, for the village.
I would rather have something we can modify ourselves 20 years, so personally, but
I'd just like to know, if we do have to have them both, we can compare both sets of numbers and see who's coming out with the correct amount better.
What numbers you like more?
Well, I'm not saying what I like more, what actually makes sense. I mean, he obviously does this for many multiple, many cities and villages and townships, where Plant Moran's more or less an auditing company.
Who also work with cities and
How soon can we know if you're on this contract?
Oh, we can find that out pretty immediate. As long as
All right, Tim, go on your office.
Historic records are not always readily available as I would like. So if, you know, if Lisa and I can find everything as timely as we'd like, then it should be pretty immediate. And it really just depends on that. To, to your point, that the other municipalities that have worked, I've mentioned this before, and that, like, talking to, the reason that I asked John, and we've kind of gone this route, is because talking to many different municipalities when we were in our budget, the name that I kept hearing was John from municipal analytics. And like, we had Milford up there. Christian, the village manager from Milford, said the single best thing that he's done for his village is get them involved, and that he, you know, every, you know, they train their, their team to go through that model and update it, and it's just, and if there's ever any issues, they've been very receptive and working with them. And so, you know, when I keep hearing the same name over and over, especially in this community, it's like, okay, this is probably the drop we should go. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Then we approve the contract with the amendment.
Are we already in motion? I don't think we are. Oh, are we?
Yeah, we are.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're in council conference right now.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, we did public comment. We did discussion. Yeah, we already had the motion. So who made the motion? The motion, the motion was by, well, the motion was by you.
Yep.
So you can amend your motion.
I have some discussion first before.
Okay.
Those are for you guys to get done. Should I amend it then?
Yeah. So, but before, before you amend your motion, Ryan will speak, but then you'll have to amend your motion if you, and then Wendell will have to approve the amendment because his was the second.
A lot of what everyone was talking about was some of the questions I had, so I was just waiting to see where it led to. This is more for the village staff. Are there any other overlaps with companies for any of the other tools that are being provided with this? And how does this already pertain to, like, your guys' job scope? Like, are you already doing any of this? Is this just a provider tool to make it easier and forecast better?
Yeah, so obviously it's something that works in tandem with what we do. A lot of what Lisa has, you know, our, our vision of maybe what we want to do, you know, has been kind of rough because we've been having to play catch-up a lot. Lisa has, is having to do the day-to-day all the time. I've been doing a lot of day-to-day operations, you know, working with our team, making sure that we're covering a lot of these areas. But what we've not been able to do as much has been able to do some of the strategic planning. And so without a staff, as Cheryl Lynn mentioned, this augments all of the things that we need to do. It allows us to look ahead and do some of this strategic planning. And in many ways, it, it provides this additional staff member to both Lisa and I what we do every day. And so it, yeah, it would definitely assist in what we do.
Another question for it. Our budget's already kind of tight. How does that follow with our budget we currently have if we want to do it this budget cycle?
Yeah. So, and that's, and we're going to have to, there's a lot of things that we have to look into in how we're going to be able to afford this. Part of it is, having the water sewer rates study in there allows us to utilize some water sewer money for this as well, proportionate to how it would, you know, benefit the model. So that's one of the reasons that we wanted in there in order to allow us to utilize different funds, so it's not all just coming out of the general fund, for example. And so we are having to get creative and give specific recommendations, but it's going to have to come out of some of our contractual expenses.
And so between water and sewer and contractual, we have it?
I mean, yes, we do, but it's, you know, everything is heightened, so we're going to have to, Lisa and I are definitely going to have to, you know, figure out where every single penny's come from and report back exactly where it is at, so, where we're pulling it exactly from.
And another question for you. With the cityhood stuff, because if we were talking about like annexing, and it's also kind of for you as well, do we project that we need more staff if we're making, like, larger, like, more police, more fire, more admin, DPW, or whatever? Could that be added into it as well?
Yeah, I believe you already said, John, that you were going to add that into it.
Yes. So part of the analysis is looking at, if you change your boundaries, what is your service area looking like, and then what staffing level is needed to staff that? So that would be an added cost that we'd have to cover.
Because I know when me and Jim were on the cityhood commission last year, that was one of the things we had, like, what would our staff need to look like?
So when John and I had the initial conversation, we talked about, all right, if we were to continue on with our current boundaries, what would that look like? And then the other model as far as mapping, because we've not really discussed what this would look like, what we took was the census data. The census defines as the urban area of Holly, which includes some of the development area out into the township. And so using that is kind of what we used as a, like, a first look map as, all right, you know, does this make sense? Because again, the census already says this is the urban area of Holly. So that is what we've used to kind of expand into the area that's being developed.
That's what goes kind of in line with what the boundary committee might look at? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah. So as far as what, if, you know, if the cityhood initiative goes forward and, you know, the proposed map that would go to, towards the state boundary commission, you know, we have all of this data to inform the community when they're trying to make their decision about whether or not they sign a cityhood petition, or, you know, and the state boundary commission Or, you know, and the state boundary commission can also look at and say, you know, this makes complete sense or no, it doesn't make sense, uh, to do this. So really it's to just provide all the facts, um, which is what I, you know, repeatedly been asked for from the council. So. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Jim, did you want to continue amending your motion?
I did. So, okay, um, yeah, I just amended. So I'm going to put a comment at the end of the twenty thousand and say, provided the village does not have conflicting contractual obligations.
Wendell, Wendell, do you agree to amend your second?
No.
Would you like to, how does that work then, Gildner?
So if, uh, then his, uh, motion, you need to vote on the pending.
The original motion?
Yes. And then depending upon how that flies, um, there can be another motion.
Got it. So right now the original motion stands, which is to accept this, um, as presented without pending any, um, contractual conflicts. Uh, Lisa, will you call the roll please?
Pascaloff?
No.
Tyre?
No.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Brandon?
No.
Four to three.
I'm sorry, did the nays get it?
Four nays, yes.
Four nays.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on. First, motion denied. I don't get to say that very often. Mr. Pascaloff?
Motion, I had a comment at the end of twenty thousand and say, provided the village does not have conflicting contractual obligations.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Pascaloff. We have a second by Cole. Clerk, will you call the?
Tyre.
Sorry. You know what? Just to be on the safe side, I'd like to offer another public comment. Any public comment? Hearing, yes, please.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Price and thank you to Mr. Kizer.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, any further discussion?
The only reason why I didn't go with the contractual is because if you get a second opinion, you have to pay for it. And I feel that if he's looking into something, we can use the water and sewer fund to help pay for him. If we don't have that on there, we can't have that fund help pay for him. So that's more that we got to try to figure out and get out of the general fund. And if we are contractually in with Plant Moran, there's got to be a stipulation somewhere where their services aren't putting up to the value that we expected and we could walk out of that contract.
I'm going to agree with Daniel. We have continuously asked to look at other audit forms. We have not shown that they are the one that everybody wanted to be on board with. I've also sat through those meetings with Plant Moran's water sewer rates and it sounds à la carte to me, um, pending whatever. But I, you know, I think we were good.
Okay.
I will agree with all of that. Now, my concern however though is what if the contract comes back and says we're locked in at fifty thousand dollars every year for five years?
Well, and I'd further like to point out that as Jim, um, amended it, it's to conflicting contracts. So if there is wiggle room to get out of that contract, it's not conflicting.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I just, I just don't want to hold him up for.
Valid.
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
All valid.
Him rolling as soon as possible and knowing that we can afford.
Speaking of as soon as possible, counsel, anything else?
Um, do we have any other contracts out there that might also conflict with it, like for financial forecasting or financial impact analysis and stuff like that?
No, the, the auditing that we do is a completely separate service for the, for that. Uh, Lisa, is there anything you can?
Just to cover your motion. That's not just water rate. We're looking at everything. So, yeah.
He'd put a blanket out there.
All right, then clerk, will you call the roll please?
Pascaloff?
Yes.
Tyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Where are we at here?
We are at old C.
Old C, new C. Do I have a first to consider item C of new business?
I'll make the motion to consider item C of new business. That was the old C of the consent agenda?
There we go. Um, okay, the updates to the fee schedule. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I have a motion by Wendell and a second by Cole. Do you want to present?
Yes. The reason why I pulled this down is just some of the things looked kind of like the NF, NF, S, NSF check fee. I know it's different from every bank we go to. I don't know what our bank charges. Um, and then clerk certification. I don't know what that's supposed to mean, but if it's something like a notary public thing, there should be something for that. For the police department, uh, CD and DVD duplication.
The changes from the previous fee schedule are the items that are highlighted. Just the only things that we're asking to amend are the highlighted things on the fee schedule.
I know. Well, okay then, but I still, I don't, I see that you, well, I don't know.
You could still amend whatever he wants to.
Yeah, absolutely. Just wanted to let you know that those are all.
Cause I'm just saying, there's, these are fees, some of these fees, I just don't agree with at all.
Bye, John. Thank you.
Well, can you, can you elaborate on what you don't agree?
Well, it's like for the regis, rental registration, annual long-term, they've got a fifty dollar fee, late fee of thirty dollars. Short-term annuals don't have no late fee.
Short-term was first come, first served. So there wouldn't be a late fee. It's whenever you register it. So say there's still openings in July. If you're a sir in July, it's not going to be late.
Okay. And then we got, this is just me probably being petty, but we got, uh, road closures, four hours, hundred and fifty dollars plus thirty-five dollars for barricades. A lot of the events that I've been on, it's been closed for seven hours. So that, and then, um, like I said, that CD, DVD duplication, that's outdated. Don't we really use the CDs or DVDs anymore? It's all on the, uh, micro flash drives.
That's not true. The police department uses, uh, CDs.
That's not true.
That's not true?
No. Um, we still have to make that, um, and this isn't, I'm saying this because it's fun. Uh, the courts have the flash drives, but most of the attorneys still want the DVD CDs. So our discoveries are weekly, sometimes daily, which they're using.
The more you know.
And the only, and the only, and the only other thing, even though it hasn't.
You can't erase what I got.
And the other thing was this water department fees, we don't have anything that says out of village pricing on that. We have. I know. I'm just saying, I, we don't have, we should have a thing that says to be determined for out of village pricing. So that way Lisa, it's on there. We've got a scapegoat to fall onto once we get that done.
Um, what, what are we referring to, skirt?
The water, uh, water department fees? It's on the, it's the back part of the P page or? We don't have nothing for out of village pricing?
We haven't said that yet.
Yeah, we haven't set it up yet.
Well, I know, but we should have something on there to say to be determined or something.
Yeah, we haven't had a resolution yet. There was a resolution back in, uh, twenty nineteen, was it? The last resolution was to separate, because in, within our charter, it allows us to set, uh, like non-resident and resident rates on things. But the last resolution from council, previous council, several councils let go, were to have it as one rate. So we haven't established that yet. That hasn't been, the finance committee has been looking at it. That's part of what John was talking about. But we haven't separated it as like a non-resident and resident fee. So we didn't want to prematurely put it on to a fee schedule without it being a, uh, council.
Well, that's why I said to be determined because somebody wants to go on there, let's say we change it, they go, well, I have a fee schedule here that, you know, so also gave me, it doesn't have it on there.
Well, and the charter states that the fee schedule can be changed by council. And so it, when you actually change it, when council, when it, when we would add that on, if that were to ever get added on, council would then, uh, vote for those changes and then they would be, uh, added. So.
I'm just making sure we cover our bases so we're not leaving ourselves open for anything. That's all.
All right. So the only thing I would say is the construction board of bills be that's pretty standard for the amount for it?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We, and so we just reviewed like surrounding communities too, and that's pretty, pretty much the baseline.
Looks like it was near the same as the zoning ones, right?
Do we want clarification of what the clerk certification fee or what that entails? It's a zero fee.
It's probably a notary.
Well, don't they charge for notaries?
We do not charge for notaries. No, we do not.
The library doesn't either.
Okay. Well, I know some places do. I didn't know.
Yeah. A lot of banks don't even charge here.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I usually go to bank.
And per the notary, notary law, we can only accept up to ten dollars anyway, even if it is per document.
Okay. Um.
I'm sassified.
Public comment? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Clerk, will you call the roll please?
Tyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Pascaloff?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you read new item D?
So that would be the warrant, correct?
That was the old E.
The consideration of approval of the warrant, twenty twenty-five dash eleven in the amount of five hundred eleven thousand seven twenty-three point three.
No, I thought he wanted to do the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three five for the park hours.
No, it was the warrant.
It was E. Okay. Just making sure. Um, do I have a first to consider this item?
I'll make the motion to consider this item.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Ryan, second by Wendell. Wendell, do you want to present?
Yeah, when I was going through this consent agenda for a warrant, um, just a couple of things were popping off. I mean, like they always do. And, um, I don't know how we do certain things and like uniform allowances and everything else, if that's a yearly thing or if it's department things. And then the one thing that I would like to see happen, and I don't know if it's the right way I'm saying it or not, but when we have, uh, vehicle repairs being done or spending money Autozone, O'Reilly's or whatever, I'd like to see the receipt attached to it so we know what we're buying. And also the repairs, what vehicle had what repair is done to it. If it's a repetitive repair, we need to look into, is that satisfactory? Will it keep that vehicle around? Or should we just exparce it? You know, I mean, there was a towing fee of, um, let me see, where was that at? Four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and seventy-three dollars for a complete towing service? And we're three, three square miles. Four hundred and seventy-three dollars to tow a vehicle somewhere? You'd assume inside of our village area?
Yes.
It's like, wow.
All right. Well, I'm going to have, uh, Brian go up to the podium for a second. He's going to help me out with this one. But I, I, you know, I'm, I'd be interested in what you're, what you want to do, if you want to be.
Well, it's like.
Do all administrative, uh, like charges as far as, you know, how we are, um, you know, how, how we're doing business. I would be interested in specific recommendations that.
Well, it's like, you know, if we have to the towing, if we get, if we make a contract with, let's say, Bill's D's who's out of Holly, based, and he could take care of all of our towing at a flat rate and give us a, a decent deal. You know, I'm not saying that that's what he's going to do, but I'm saying have the same company, no matter what, flat book around. So we know exactly he's doing the towing and exactly what it's going to cost per mile. And we're not, we're the next guy to get charged more or less. We're getting the same rate no matter what.
Go ahead, Brian.
The, Jack did try to tow that vehicle and he couldn't.
I don't know what vehicle it is.
It, it's one of our older dump trucks. It's been at this repair shop for a lengthy amount of time. So I had them tow it from that repair shop to another repair shop. It wasn't.
Probably talked about.
It wasn't repaired. It wasn't in a local tow and it had to use a larger truck. So that was a semi tow truck, not a standard tow truck that towed that. So that's why.
And then, and then things like that, when they, if they submit it, it's a different, just besides complete towing service, vehicle repair and maintenance. We look at that and I'm like, well, okay, but now, now we said it's a heavy-duty tow truck basically required. Well, that's a justifiable price. It's out of the district, everything else. And that way then we know. And it's just like same thing when it goes for like anything when we buy stuff, O'Reilly's and accounts or whatever. You know, it'd be nice to know what we're purchasing. Are we purchasing the same thing twice? Is Tim purchasing this and is Brian purchasing the same thing when they could just use the same thing? I mean, like windshield wash or solvent, like the police department purchased it. And then Brian purchases something and all this when we could just purchase it all at once, a big conglomerate pallet and then have it. So we're not going through and just having all this little, oh, I had spent a dollar thirty-nine at O'Reilly's for a bolt.
I think you might be crossing into, um, an area that the department heads are contractually permitted to make decisions on themselves without that kind of micromanagement.
I'm not really, I'm not trying to micromanage them, but I see what you're saying. I'm just trying to, so we understand better what's, because I mean, we know uniform allowances, uniform allowances. The only thing I don't understand is why we have a uniform allowance for, um, Huron Valley guns.
Probably like a holster or.
Yeah, go ahead.
Safety vests, holsters.
But that's what I'm asking you.
But so I, I would, I would counter a little bit in that you are like, that's why we've attached not only the warrant that shows, you know, the breakdown. We've provided, like, what you're seeing is essentially are the receipts from all these places. That's why you're seeing Huron, Huron Valley guns and all these things. Previously, you would have never seen those things. We're trying to provide as much transparency without, you know, obviously if you saw every receipt that came through the village.
Further, every.
You'd have to sit next to Carol, uh, in the office for a couple of days to just go through all of that.
Every week when Lisa signs checks, they have to submit a lot of paperwork and receipts. And then there's also a record of who's been solicited for different services as well. So if there's a specific item that you want to have them start, um, soliciting new manufacturers for, um, speak to the item. Um, this kind of vague directive to overhaul the entire system is, um, a little difficult, I think, for everyone to answer.
Well, and I understand that. When I, when I say like, you know, I didn't understand, let's see, gun holsters and everything else makes sense. You know, I didn't, that, my, my brain didn't compute that. I know from being in business with my father and working at other places, when underneath somebody had receipts they submitted other than the ma, ma, main ones, they would always submit them with that.
I, I will say just for you, so you understand, part of our audit process is we are trying to clean up a lot of this. I know, I know that we're really worried about expenses, making sure that everything is taken like care of. So we're actually increasing how we, uh, review these things. In the past, um, you know, it was a little bit more carte blanche, but now it's more so, all right, the, the expenses come to me. Like the department heads bring me any expenses, I have to sign off on it. Then it goes over to, uh, Lisa to review. And now she goes, and then it goes to Carol to actually pay off some of these expenses in that process. Previously, it went to Carol and then it went backwards. Uh, and so, yeah, and so we, we are, you know, these are things that we've, we've identified in audit and we're kind of fixing some of these processes. We're not perfect yet.
No, I, I.
But yeah, but these are, these are things that we're trying to do to improve the accountability and making sure that, uh, all expenses are accounted for. While also not like, I can't, uh, you know, if, if Chief Narsh needs to get, you know, a new holster, he has spending, you know, limits that he can do. And what we've done is, all right, we've budgeted this amount for these things. You know, as long as it's not a, an expense over a certain criteria, they, they get to spend that until they get to a certain percentage within that budget line item. And then we actually focus in even a little bit more to be like, all right, even though you're allowed to do it, we're, you're not allowed to bust your budget on things. And like, you have to get approvals for that.
There's that purchasing policy to tend to as well.
And additionally, I just want to speak to this too. So they, there's only so many characters within that line item that can go on that check stub. So when Carol's typing the descriptions in, you know, Chief Narsh may have three sentences of what he's buying, but it's, she, she's limited to the characters. So she sometimes tries to have to just make a, you know, a, a, a summary of what it is because there's not enough room on the check stubs.
And that's one of the reasons why I asked for the department number list you guys gave me today. It's so that when I get these, I can look at them and better understand them. So.
Okay.
Wasn't trying to picket it up or throw stone in it or say that you guys aren't doing the job right.
I am glad to hear that. Is there any other council comments?
I think you guys can take a seat unless we have.
I don't think they need to. Okay, gentlemen, thank you. I think we've taken up enough of your time.
Amber was right.
Um, any?
For the record, if we have a question on something, this packet comes out in enough, um, notice that we can call you, right?
Correct.
I mean, it, this is starts page twenty-two of two hundred and nineteen. It is a large warrant.
Counsel, any further comments? Public, any public comment? Come on up.
Jim, the head's off D one five two two six, Waller Court. Um, I did a.
Um, I did appreciate that document in the agenda. I did go through it line by line. There was a couple of things where I was like, hmm, I wonder what that's for. Um, but they weren't great amounts and, um, reading through, I'll just be like looking for that each month. Is that gonna come out every month? Um, but I do appreciate Councilman, uh, Wendell's, um, bringing that up just because, you know, that, I don't remember the towing one specifically raising a flag to me, but, um, once he said it, I was like, oh yeah, I wonder what that was. Um, so I do appreciate that you asked for that explanation. Um, I don't think that like detailed receipts are necessary because that would be a very big document. But, um, yeah, I, I would ask that you go line by line and if there's an item with a large price tag or an item that's repetitive each month and across different departments, then I think it's okay to discuss that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Lisa Lee, call the roll, please.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Kaskalov?
Yes.
Tyre?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you for the understanding.
Of course.
I don't know where I'm at. Uh, where are we?
Reports.
Reports.
Reports, wonderful. Tim, you want to kick it off?
Absolutely. In fact, I will, um, because she's waited so patiently, uh, so we actually are gonna get a, our first report will be from, uh, one of our liaisons from our dam committee, uh, who's gonna provide us an update.
Regina Keiko, seven eleven South Broad Street, Holly. Good evening, everyone. Um, I am here to give you guys an update on what we have been doing on the Milpon Committee because we have finally made some progress a little bit here and there. Uh, so the dam committee continues working diligently towards submitting the petition for a legal lake level to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners under Part three oh seven. The original petition includes seventy-six parcels and we now have a redacted version which includes sixty-six. Some parcels were removed after closer examination showed that they did not appear to have riparian rights or direct access. That final determination will ultimately rest with the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner. And we do believe that they will agree with at least some, if not all of our redactions based on property layout, access limitations, and inability to reach the water. We are still striving for the two-thirds majority using the higher parcel count though, just in case. Um, at present, out of the sixty-six parcel list, we have thirty-nine of the forty-four signatures needed so far. And out of the seventy-six parcel version, we have forty-one of the fifty-one required. We do have some verbal commitments, but I've not added those yet, uh, because they're not a formal count. Uh, we are continuing our outreach still. I do feel that this is a strong progress given the short timeline and the difficult circumstances that we have faced. Uh, twenty-one of the parcels in total lie within the Village of Holly and the remaining fifty-five parcels lie within Rose Township. Um, on Monday, this coming Monday, both Rose Township and the Village of Holly will be providing me with envelopes so that we can mail petitions to eleven off-site riparian owners that we have been unable to reach in person. The committee is personally covering the cost of postage and prepaid return envelopes to ensure transparency and participation. The use of official municipal envelopes helps recipients recognize the mail as legitimate and trustworthy. Each recipient will have the option to sign or to decline participation as that choice remains entirely their own. We intend to have the signatures completed by the end of the year. If we fall short, we will work with Oakland County Commissioners to pursue the only other legal pathway to establish Part three oh seven, which is introducing a motion through the County Board of Commissioners to establish the legal lake level by resolution. Some are on board with this pathway, but we hope it will not be needed as we would prefer to follow the most democratic and fair process moving forward. The Milpon Committee recently formed several subcommittees to divide the workload and allow members to focus on their areas of expertise. The first of which is our engineering subcommittee. Robert Montgomery is leading that one and he has been working on a potential backup plan. And that's in case the legal lake level process cannot be achieved. He has personally covered the cost to have an engineering firm come out and assess the spillway area and provide feedback on feasibility and potential design options. This backup plan would involve a lower cost structure and a lower water level. While it is ultimately a last resort, it's a responsible consideration as the village has made it clear it does not wish to retain ownership or financial responsibility for maintaining such a costly piece of infrastructure long term. We expect a bid report from that company soon. Regardless, this would just be an initial report to see what expenses look like as we would still have to seek out other bids to follow village purchasing agreements. And of course, any major decisions would always be brought before council. Our second subcommittee is a Soil Stabilization and Wetlands Subcommittee. Sue Julian has been leading efforts to identify safe vegetation to prevent further erosion of private embankments. After months of waiting, she has finally received written confirmation from Eagle allowing the planting of annual rye grass without penalty. Unfortunately, the growing season has passed, so planting will now take place in the spring. Sue herself personally purchased two hundred fifty pounds of rye seed totaling six hundred and thirty-six dollars, enough to cover the lower ponds embankments. The Milpon Committee discussed and agreed to personally reimburse Sue for this expense. Any planting will absolutely require property owner permission on a parcel-by-parcel basis for access. Sue and the village administration are still exploring all contingencies and responsibilities regarding wetlands and mitigation. The intention of the rye planting is to help stave off invasive species that have already begun to take hold and to prevent further erosion during the straw down period. The next subcommittee is the Historical and Grants Subcommittee. I am currently leading this effort to pursue landmark recognition for Stiff's Milpond to help protect it long-term and open funding opportunities. I will be presenting this to council next month. This work also includes coordinating administrative and regional partnerships. Holly Township Parks has already passed a resolution of support, as you all know. And I will, um, and I have been informed just today that Rose Township will be passing theirs this coming Monday. And I will be, um, presenting a resolution of support to Holly Township at their next board meeting next week as well to continue building on this multi-jurisdictional declaration recognizing Stiff's Milpond as a regional and environmental landmark. We are also coordinating a third informational session with Ryan from the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office to answer questions about the Part three oh seven process and our next steps. We will welcome council members and the public to attend or even submit questions in advance. The date is to be determined and will be posted once we have confirmed with him. The committee appreciates the village's continued support and we remain focused on finding a fair, sustainable solution for our community, our waterway, and our shared future.
Thank you, Regina.
If you guys have any questions, uh, you know, Regina, I've talked about this, but if you have any questions on, you know, the, what's going on with the dam, uh, or, you know, current status, uh, you know, we, we could take them, uh, the, I just want to, like, Regina, Sherilyn, uh, Ashley, and, you know, all our members of the dam committee, obviously, uh, very passionate about this. Uh, you know, there's, you know, Regina has been so dedicated and, you know, you're tracking this down, both her, Sherilyn, they've gone to the Rose Township meetings and, you know, requested support. They got it from the Parks Commission and the Township. They're working in Holly Township too. Um, really, they've been driving, you know, this initiative where staff, we just don't have the staffing. And also, it's a, a community initiative. It has to be, because whenever we're doing petitions like this, it has to be a community-led one. And we couldn't have a better champion than Regina as far as all the work she's doing.
Thanks, Tim. I'm trying.
Regina, um, the grass, the rye mix, is, you, you said the dam board's gonna pay for that?
Um, yes, so we're trying to keep money in the Milpond Fund. And, um, because we weren't sure what was going to happen, uh, with it in regards to whether we would be allowed to purchase it or not, uh, we all discussed together, uh, and voted on it, I believe it was a couple of months ago, that we would all be personally willing to fund it ourselves because we wanted to protect our embankments so desperately.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we knew what's going on because Sherilyn's comment earlier.
Yes. Of course. We don't want, we're not asking the village for money and we're not asking for money from, uh, the Milpond Fund.
So there's some, we have some outstanding questions on it that we've been, you know, trying to work through, um, as far as, because we've always been under the, the hope that we're gonna be able to draw the water back up. Uh, as far as, you know, and that we're not gonna have to really stabilize the soil because it will be water, right? And we want to make sure, although Sue Julian has been working very hard to get, you know, answers from Eagle, we want to make sure that once we do plant anything, it doesn't make us, uh, doesn't require us to maintain it as a wetland. That it doesn't put any more, uh, it doesn't lock us into any of these considerations. There's also, we talked about riparian rights. A lot of these are cut and dry. If you look at, um, like Bush Lake and some of those on property maps, we can see that, you know, the, the rights, uh, extend out into the water. Well, Stiff's Milpond, uh, you know, it, it was actually drawn out as the, the entire, uh, map of the Milpond. We haven't answered some of these riparian rights, like, how would those actually, um, you know, if Sherilyn and Regina's property get actual additional, um, uh, land, how do we actually draw those, uh, lands or is it the villages? And is it our responsibility? And if we have to plant, can we, can we actually plant on private property? Uh, because it's not considered like a right of way or any of those things. So we're having to have a lot of these, uh, questions answered and they're not, uh, they're not normal questions.
Not easy ones to answer.
They're very specific, uh, and, and again, um, some of the things that, and we're also having to work in, uh, parallel with them in that they, they are working hard to, uh, do this legal lake level with the Water Resource Commission. And we are, are hoping this occurs because it is really the way that we are gonna probably be able to, uh, maintain, uh, the water level in the dam there. But we have to, we have a criteria that we have to meet by Eagle as far as within a year, we have to have done a wetland mitigation study in order to determine, you know, what the impact would be on the environment. We have two years to, from, um, you know, when they did the initial drawdown, two years, uh, to give them an answer about what we're gonna do as far as, uh, removal, um, replacement or, uh, you know, or repair. And so, one of the reasons that we're, you know, um, like, as Regina mentioned, Robert Montgomery brought in engineer to kind of start that process, help us out a little bit. One of the issues we're having is we don't know what kind of question, what kind of problem we have yet. We don't know if it's a, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar problem, two hundred fifty thousand dollar problem, two point five million dollar problem. And so this, uh, allowing, doing these, uh, endeavors helps us contextualize the problem and like, help us better address like, all right, what kind of other engineers we might not need to get in to do bids? Do we want to submit this out for an RFQ or an RFP? Um, but again, it depends on where we're leaning as far as repair versus replacement versus removal. Um, because those are all different questions we have to have answered before we can even know what path we're going down and what that price tag might be.
And Eagle didn't give us anything except for we're drawing down.
For the most part.
So they shot us in the leg.
I mean, they didn't even tell us about the wetland study that they wanted until after the drawdown and they wanted that done before the drawdown. And they didn't even tell us until like recently, so it's.
To be fair, we shot ourselves in the leg twenty-five years ago.
Yep, to be fair.
I mean, if we're, if we're being honest and, but, um, you know, obviously they've expedited a lot of these things. So I don't want to just completely shift blame off of the village, like, you know, um, these are things, uh, like as John mentioned, capital improvements that could have been done two decades ago that, um, would have cost us a lot less, uh, and now we are having to, uh, bear the burden of that. Um, so, yes, Eagle is holding our foot, our feet to the fire and, um, you know, we don't agree with all of the things they're doing. But at the end of the day, at least right now, the burden is on us to, um, to do the right thing as much as we can all the time.
Why don't we just tell Eagle we're broke?
Two quick questions. Um, number one is, uh, is CISM a relevant resource?
Well, I've got, are my CISM expert here. Yeah, go ahead, Danny. Yeah, so, so Danny will now go give his a report. Because he's got some good things to say.
So we, we, uh, with the Genshin Park Project, we tried to get some grants through CISM. They have paused their grant funding through twenty twenty-six because they are currently restructuring Oakland County parks with all of the government cuts. And I think they're trying to restructure how they're doing all of their funding with the parks mileage that they passed as well. So CISM is kind of out of the question for a year or two.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have some questions for it.
Hmm?
Um, is it safe to assume that staff is reviewing the correspondence they're sending out before it gets sent out since it's gonna have the Village of Holly on it?
Oh, yeah, oh, for sure. Yeah, so Regina's been working really close with, uh, with us on.
Sorry, Regina.
So, and that's, and that's something we've, you know, we've said, hey, this has to come from the dam committee. This has to be a, you know, we're, um, we're gonna provide envelopes, again, just so when they open it up, they know that this is actually in the first.
Right, I just want to make sure you guys had a look at it since we're putting our name on it.
Yep.
Yes, I, I did give Brian, um, from our last committee meeting, the paperwork that I was, uh, sending out that Rose Township has approved, uh, just to make sure since it was using their, their envelopes. Uh, they wanted to make sure that we were being fair and honest with the residents and not being unethical in any way and letting them know what was happening. And so it's a very summarized version of what's happened from drawdown to now and letting them know about the process and giving them an option to sign or abstain. Um, so that, we would like to know if they deny, so that we can know that they've, you know, that this message has reached them, basically.
I will say for them and Ashley who's not here, like, they have been methodical in wanting to provide as much information to the point that it's almost hampered them in some ways because they like, we want to give them price tags, we want to give all these things. A lot of that just won't be decided. Like, that's Water Resource Commission has to decide a lot of these things about what level different people would be specially assessed if they were to, if they were to produce it. Um, so, but they've gone as above and beyond trying to be as transparent with, um, all of the residents. Because again, we're, we're mostly talking about Rose Township residents at this point.
We're trying to be really ethical because it is a special assessment district. That's what it would be and I want to make sure people are aware of that before they sign.
Worry about it not being ethical. It was just more make sure that something wasn't set in there that you're not supposed to say.
Oh, yeah. Yes, of course.
And I only reason why I brought it up is just not because I don't appreciate what you're doing, I just want to make sure we all know what you're doing.
Oh, absolutely.
And what's going on.
Yeah.
Any, any paperwork that I put out, um, is always handed in at the end of a meeting to staff and anything that I send in emails is always, uh, copied to staff as well.
Now, from the legal perspective, we can't be held liable for anything, can we? If we put our name on the bottom of it.
Oh, that's why I asked if staff was reviewing it so that we're covered.
Yeah, I mean.
We, we are liable.
Yeah, because we would be liable, so.
It is, um, village correspondence and that's why he wanted to make sure it's going through.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to make sure.
And we're only talking really about like four or five, like, or, uh, or maybe, you know, up to like ten or eleven residents that it will actually go out to with our, uh, name on it. It's, and it's really just people that have Holly parcels or they live in the village. The, they're kind of tailoring it to who, uh, who, who the remaining parcels are that they need to go out. Because some of them are, you know, on the Rose Township side, ones that are maybe are in probate, that are, uh, you know, people that live in Florida or, or even within, uh, you know, uh, surrounding communities.
I can give you exact numbers. It is, it is three in Holly and eight in Rose.
So, yeah, so really we're talking only three letters that are going out with our.
Emily, me, the reason why I was asking is because I wasn't top, like, you know, things that being, so I might talk about, Eagle don't like something that was put out, even though it's a hundred percent correct, Eagle make it mad at us.
Yeah, they're good at that.
Because I read, I think I read one of the reports that the concrete leach where you get the white marks on the concrete is a sign of a failure. And if you go to any piece of concrete that's in water, it does that. The Mackinac Bridge does that.
So.
Thank you, Thomas.
Last question for this was, um, say if we didn't end up getting with county and we were left with the replace, repair, remove, is, could that be added to that, uh, financial planning model?
Yeah, yeah, because that'd be part of our capital improvements that we'd be responsible for.
Or can we just bring those with us?
Possibly being added to it. Yep.
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, kept thinking.
Because that's gonna be expensive.
Um, I have one more question. I think it's for staff. Um, I know, and thank you, Regina. I know, uh, Sherilyn had mentioned earlier on the same topic about being appointed to secretary. Is there a current secretary on the Milpond?
No, there isn't. Uh, we don't.
Oh, Danny's raising his hand. Danny, you are the secretary.
Danny is, Danny is the secretary, but what, my point on that is that because it's a committee, it's not like, there isn't a requirement to actually produce minutes in the same way that like boards and commissions have.
Because it's an ad hoc committee.
Yes, exactly.
And then my, my second question was, uh, regardless of what kind of committee, that wouldn't be a council decision? That would be up to the committee? Or am I?
I mean, you could, you could appoint additional members, uh, to, to the committee. I mean, we've, we've done that already. We've put out names.
In the position of officers?
The position of officers, they would vote themselves.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure that's not on, not on us.
And I would say that, I remember with this committee that their mandate is pretty narrow. It was to advise, uh, council on, you know, the, the path that we wanted to go. And so they did advise, they wanted to pursue the legal lake level. And that's, they've kind of taken it as a community initiative to do this process. And so that is like, they, they are, they are going above and beyond with some of these other things. And so that's discussion we've had about, all right, we need to make sure that we stay within, you know, the, the lane that has been established by council for this committee and not, you know, uh, going different directions.
Okay.
So is Sherilyn currently not on the committee?
Why not?
Um.
Jim wants, but he resigned.
That's right. That's right. I, I knew there was someone in your household.
May I add one more thing?
You're still doing your report.
I have one, may I add one more thing, Tim? Is that okay?
You may.
Uh, with the above and beyond, the reason that we have added some of the extra things like with the subcommittees is because Part three oh seven, um, to achieve a legal lake level, requires so many necessary steps to take. For instance, if, if we're working towards other avenues, it actually lowers the cost. They need mapping, they need historical information, they need many, many avenues covered. They need mapping, they need historical information, they need many, many avenues covered. And Ryan from the Water Resources Commission did let us know that any information that's already done on our end, whether it's through historical district, et cetera, or anything we already have, is beneficial because it would cut down on their paperwork and office time, which lowers our price tag. So for me, I'm like, anything we can do in the winter, in my off time, I'm gonna do it. Cause I wanna cut everyone's costs, especially the people in Rose, cause it's a lot for them.
And we have other community volunteers like Diane and Sherilyn that are volunteer to go through some of these historical documents, pull out relevant things and help build that.
Would we as council want to add another member since she's already doing so much work for them already?
And Jim did resign, so that is something we can put on next month's agenda?
Oh, we have to have an agenda for it, we just can't.
No, I don't think.
We could modify the agenda.
Today's agenda?
I would, I, I, let me look at how we wrote that because I believe that I wrote it.
I was gonna say, I thought that we worded it where.
It's in our council policies and procedures?
Yeah.
We can always vote to suspend the policies and procedures to add that motion.
I believe that this committee, I wrote it the same way that when I rewrote the depot one, is that we do the initial setup and then they can vote in new members themselves. As far as because it's an ad hoc committee, like, they have some responsibility of like maintaining membership. But I'll verify that.
And we, we did talk about it when Jim resigned, that it did not have to be formal because it's an ad hoc committee, so he didn't have to turn in a letter of resignation. We didn't have to approve his resignation, none of that, so. Yeah, let's review that and then obviously Sherilyn can attend the meeting. And if we have to appoint her, we will on the next one, otherwise it'll be just up to them.
So to continue my report, so, you know, just some great events with the DDA, the ladies night out, witches night out, both were well attended and well put on by the DDA. They're, they're doing a great job with those events. We've got, obviously, we have the Dickens Festival, the parade, November twenty-eighth, six P M.
Tim, can I interrupt for one second? We need participants for the parade badly. So if anybody knows anybody. Okay, I'm sorry.
The depot move, so we, we had a little bit of, a few days where we had to get some utilities disconnected that kind of pushed it a little bit more to the right. Originally, the date was supposed to be November seventeenth, that actual building moved. Right now, we're looking at moving towards the week before Thanksgiving. Based on the holiday, we don't know if they're actually gonna fulfill that or it'll be the first week in December. We're still looking at when that actual date will be, when we have a solid date. I'll obviously inform the council and the community. Regina did the dam one, I wanna thank all the people in the community for supporting the food pantry. We, you know, we recognize with the continued federal shutdown and how it might affect our community. We put out, you know, some requests out there for additional items, additional support. We got a thousand dollars of donations to our food pantry as far as being able to do like Kroger gift cards. Tons of donations, thank you for all of our pantry angels that have been managing that for us. As well as we got additional donations to our, our fire department. We didn't think this year we were gonna be able to afford to do a, a Thanksgiving dinner giveaway and because of donations from, what was the organization, the bank?
Michigan United Credit Union in Hollywood.
Yep, and that we are able to provide fifty Thanksgiving dinners to families in our community that otherwise would not have that.
First come, first served, the Thursday before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, between eleven and three. So if you know families in our community that desperately need that, everyone please come to the fireball and or follow our Facebook page, there's more information on there. But we'd love to be able to give everyone those dinners off.
You may have seen that on our, I sent out an email yesterday that on Monday, the DDA voted to, they request, requesting a joint meeting with council to do a working group at six forty-five on Monday. We are gonna notice that as if we're going to have a quorum, we're hoping to have a quorum in order to have an informed discussion and specifically around the new, of the position of a DDA director slash economic development director to kind of form, formalize what that would look like as a group. I'll do a kind of a presentation of what I'm thinking and then it'll be really up to the two bodies to have discussions. Because it is a special work session for both bodies. We are limited to discuss only what, what are agenda items and that's that. So we can't like, it's not a case where we can add additional agenda items or topics of discussion. It's really limited to that topic at that time. Tree planting with our CDBG funds, we've put out information out there. We still have additional opportunities for people that live within our CDBG district. Simply that is our community development block grant district. If you're looking at a map, for us, it's pretty much north of Elm. If you go to the Oakland County's website, they'll show you what it is. But if you have, if you're looking to put a tree in your right of way, if you reach out to us, we still have some opportunities for that. As well as some, we can use that to put trees in other areas. We have about seventeen thousand dollars total that was grant funded from Oakland County that we have to spend. So we're looking at, you know, exactly how we're gonna do that. We're gonna put out a tree planting RFP. That's kind of a little backwards, not how much, you know, would it take to do this? It's like this, how much we have, how many trees can you do for this amount? And so, we're working on that as well. And my last thing that I wanna point out is, you know, just our condolences to the Springfield Fire Department for the loss of Lieutenant John Minor, who many of us attended that funeral and, you know, our whole community grieves. And I'm really appreciative of our, our team that when, as they were grieving, our department was able to go in and fill in some of their spots to make sure that they were still maintained safely while they were in this period. So, and that's all I have.
Do you want to plant the trees?
No.
Lisa?
So, again, as Tim was saying earlier, we're still in the audit, we're still doing the audit. Again, the anticipation is to get it done before the filings are done. So we're working diligently with Plant Moran to get that completed. And to piggyback off the CDBG, we also have thirty-five hundred dollars that we're going to give to Neighbor to Neighbor for people who can't afford their water bills. And that was as of last year, so there's, she has a list of all the people that, that we donated so that we can give them that thirty-five hundred dollars. And that's all that.
Thank you. Any other staff wants to make a report? Lots of fun, no, okay. Councilman Wendell?
Yes, ma'am.
It is your board comment.
Okay, my board comment. Like I was, I said wrongly at the time, anybody who's looking to join the lighter parade, go on the Dickens Festival website, Facebook page and click the link and fill out the form. We only have right now about eleven participants and we're looking for a lot more. So, that, and then I have, I don't know who dropped the ball or what dropped the ball, but we had our ladies' night, the couple, on the seventh, I think, last weekend? And we had some problems with no parking signs and barricades. And I retained the copy from last week, last month's agenda and it said they were doing a road closure from Civic to Junction. But we only had two barricades, no no parking signs, and that was it. And I don't know if it was, every event that we've ever closed on a street, when they say they're closing down from one end to another, they always put out four barricades. And they always have the no parking signs. This time, we had two, two barricades and that was it and it was. So I don't know where the disconnect happened at or what it was, but.
I can talk that a little bit if you would like.
Sure.
So, with, with that one, obviously, so we've identified some gaps in our special event policy. We've improved it over the last few months and we've identified some additional areas. And our expectation is, because on the form, it says street closures, but there's also parking closures as well that you're supposed to annotate and tell us which parking spots. And so we're kind of going letter of the law, while a lot of organizations that have previously done special events are like, well, this is the way we've always done it. And we're like, well, now we're, we're having, we want a little bit more specificity in, in the actual agreements. So, we were actually talking about in our department head morning, one of the things that I wanna institute is that I really need to have an opportunity to sit down before, after council approves, sit down with every special event, go over all of the specific details with them on it and make sure that, you know, everything is accounted, like, accounted for that they want and also that we are annotating on that to provide them an invoice beforehand so that when we're talking about barricades, all of these things, that we, they know any of those costs ahead of time so they can defray costs, but also so that we're making sure that we're getting all the cost recovery from events. So that our staff isn't, you know, that we're not having to pay for some of these events out of our own pockets. But yeah, so this last one was just a, we, we looked at the letter of the law of the, the application and because like for some, like our last parade, we didn't remove parking, we just put parking, our barriers up and if they were parked there, so we've, we've identified that gap and we were making corrections for the future though.
That's, I mean, that's all it was because I had to, I got a phone call at noon from, from one of the people putting the event on and asking if I had any of my cones available that we could put signs on for no parking. And I'm like, so I was down there from noon to nine o'clock. You know, and I was just like, was trying to figure out if, like, they didn't feel something all right or, you know, and like you said, you're gonna meet up with them once we figure it out, which is a great idea.
For example, Danny and I are meeting with the Dickens Festival tomorrow to just go over all of the details of their special, like, their special event application to make sure, cause this is my first time in this role attending, although I went to the event last year as I was, you know, investigating Holly. I never, I was never in this seat during it and so, we're gonna go over it and make sure that we've got all of that covered for this bigger event.
Wendell?
And then HTC meets tomorrow, so I don't have any regard to that because they didn't meet last month. So, other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cole?
I was not able to attend the HIA meeting that they just had, but we did get an email from Sarah McGrath, a caseworker for HIA. She wanted to extend that they are going to continue to request the Village of Holly to consider sponsorship money to Holly area youth assistance to continue to fund programs that directly assist and support residents, looking at our twenty-six budget. So they, they are asking for that. I've talked multiple times about what a great resource HIA is in the community and all the amazing things they do. Some of the things they've said is, in two thousand twenty-five, they paid seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars for kids in the village to participate in sports, attend camps, go on educational field trips, participate in band, take driver's training. They are continuing that work and asking that we support them for twenty-six. So that's what I have. They are in the middle of a toy drive, there's lots of things going on. We're at the holiday season, thank you Fire Department for sponsoring fifty lunch, or dinners for Thanksgiving. What day is that? Cause I have the microphone and you didn't, just so people hear it. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving from eleven to three, if you need it. Or when they go, because it is first come, first served. But there's fifty dinners that Wednesday, just because I have the mic and you didn't, hopefully people hear that. That's what I got.
Let's stick with the HIA for, for a second, is that the one that we're having the, the issue with what line to pull it from? Or was that something else?
In the past, at least from what we, I could tell from our budget session that we just previously had for the twenty-five year, we gave CDBG funds.
Yeah, I could talk this a little bit if you would like.
Alright, thank you, Tim.
So with the HIA, you know, I, I mean, we, we agree that it's a great organization. We wanna, you know, figure out how we can support. One of the concerns is that I believe it's, it's, so within the budgeting policy or the law, I think it's article two, section eight, nineteen, something like that, that states that we cannot, we cannot like, use taxpayer money to support another organization by just giving a check, essentially. We can't just say, it has to be for a specific project or cause that is, that we can identify the money going, like, being spent within our, our district and our community. The way that we've gotten around that in the past is by using CDBG funds, like the thirty-five hundred dollars that we're using for Neighbor to Neighbor, that council has identified. They've expressed that they don't want the CDBG funds because they come with additional considerations and how they have to be spent and used. And they've said, well, in the past, we've looked and it came out of general fund. And I've said, well, I just need to see how we can do that legally. We have to determine if we can do it legally and then if we have the fiscal capacity to do it. I mean, although we wanna support, and then we also need to look at, they say there are some obligations they, they've mentioned about how it was set up with the court, but I haven't seen any of those documents yet. Again, we would love to support it, we just need to make sure that we're doing it legally and correctly in that we have the capacity to do it.
Yeah, I would also like to point out, it's not as if we, I mean, I always wanna say like we're not reinventing the wheel here, but we kinda are on some of this. There is not a legacy document that we can look at to say this was how it was done. So we are just researching at this point, but.
Yeah, and I, I think it's probably the consensus of council that we'd like to continue supporting HIA. Can I get some nods or some shakes? Yeah.
Can we reach out to the other municipalities that support and see how they use their funds for it?
Yeah, and I, and where I've been hesitant on that is I also don't want to ask questions that are going to prevent other municipalities from, from, you know.
Yeah, sorry, I'm going to look into it. I thought they use it from this law, so maybe we should look at that.
So I have been pulling the budgets of the municipalities around us. At this point, there's only one that I can see that lists on their publicly posted budget where they are giving to a youth assistance organization at the moment. So I am going back through all of that, that is what I've been working on because they are funded throughout Oakland County. Every municipality has a youth assistance, they are funded somehow, I don't know how yet, but I am on it.
And then it sounds like maybe the, the worst case scenario is that they get CDBG and they have to turn in the proper paperwork and apply it to something specific.
And it wouldn't be for this year, it would be for a following year when we are doing our CDBG. No, actually, I believe CDBG no longer has that funding line for it.
Yeah, they don't, they, they only have certain categories and they, they, cause again, CDBG has lost funding.
Oh, never mind.
And, yeah. So that wasn't one of the, that was not one of the, I think there's five categories.
Well, we've got Steph on it, we will do what it takes to figure it out. If it's at all possible, it will happen. Okay. Cole?
That was mine.
That was it?
Yep, that's my closing.
Alright, Claire?
Yes. Parks does not meet in November or December, but I did wanna give an update on our last event, Halloween. We had a great turnout this year with over a hundred applicants for the costume contest. We went through almost all the donuts and cider, the hayrides were a hit. We were joined for the first time this year by Big Papa's Pizza, who handed out free pizza slices. Our event sponsors this year were Wingle Myers, Holly Donut Shop, the American Legion and the Holly VFW. Our costume contest prizes were made possible by Cracker Snacks Barbecue, Gnome Daddy Ceramics, Holly Bowling Alley, Cupcakes and Kisses, Altered Designs, Avia Restaurant, Holly Cafe and Holly Antiques. I'd also like to shout out to our downtown businesses who handed out candy at their shops and made a magical day for the kids. These kind of events would not be possible without the tireless efforts of our volunteers, staff, first responders and our wonderful businesses. I hope with the holidays coming up that we all remember to shop local and support our neighbors. On a personal note, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate our newest members for making it through their first year on council. Can you believe it's only been a year, it's like a fifty-year relentless period or something?
Today was the actual day too, today.
Some of us haven't celebrated a year yet.
Yeah, you're like two weeks behind, right?
I'm like once.
So in the spirit of the season, I'd like to say what I'm thankful for. Jim, I'm thankful for your never-ending perseverance toward research and fact-based analysis. Buster, I'm thankful for your historical knowledge and your diligence towards our first responders. Thomas, I'm thankful for your thoughtful questions and your sense of service. Daniel, I'm thankful for your candor and your heart for volunteering. Shannon, I'm thankful for your reason and for your financial savviness. April, I'm thankful for your leadership and your integrity. I'm thankful for our staff who answers our endless questions, who advocates for us and this village and who rarely gets the thanks they deserve and I'm glad that you got it tonight. And since I know it can be tough during your first year and since we are here on a Wednesday because of Veterans Day, I would like to read a quote by a former president and a veteran in honor of you all. "The Man in the Arena" by Theodore Roosevelt. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short again and again, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end..." Who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory or defeat. Happy Thanksgiving.
That was powerful. You get to follow that. You ready?
Good luck.
That's a tough act to follow. That is a tough, you tough act to follow there.
Summer tires over there. Um, I have a few questions for staff. So back in the summer, we requested like post like attorney auditing services, professional services. Do we have any updates on those?
We have the RFPs, uh the RFPs are drafted, ready to go. Um, the we the auditing, we had discussed at a previous meeting that we were just waiting until after the auditing season. Uh, that we were gonna um and that we wanted to submit them to all be done and ready for the new fiscal year for budgeting purposes. And so that we'd have, we'd be able to submit it and have a timeline to like review and uh make a decision. And basically, if they if we make any changes, they would go into effect for the new fiscal year because obviously that would be in increased expenses. If we were to go with a different attorney, if we were to go with a new auditing firm, one way or another, so.
Um, and another question I had, as far as like when we submit an ethics complaint to you, what's the average time for it to get from you to the committee?
So usually, uh I mean, it obviously depends on uh we've we've only had a couple. One of the things that we need to fix with this and we've discussed is. We need to determine what is a formalized ethics like like when when does it become a formalized uh ethics complaint? And now it's been like, alright, I'm making a formal complaint, then that's, you know, is kind of how how we've been uh articulating that. Usually, uh it depends on the investigation, the severity of it. Um, most of the time, uh that there will be an initial like as soon as we receive it. And we have some kind of um understanding of it, it depends if I need to discuss it with the village attorney. Uh, we'll almost immediately s- schedule a time like say, you know, we've had a complaint, you know, that we've done an initial investigation. And it's uh gone to them within a couple of weeks. Um, again, it depends on, you know. If it's if it's a council member, then it has to have the attorney involved. If it's um, you know, if something that we can uh handle. We've only had a handle, really a couple of official complaints. There have been other things that I have I have brought up to uh the Ethics Committee. Just as I was doing my due diligence through the process as far as things like incompatible offices um that we've that that we've discussed before. That we've gotten like attorney uh opinions on um that weren't necessary complaints, but they were just, you know, I just wanted to update if it ever came out. You know, like, hey, we've we reviewed this for an incompatible office, or there are things that we've determined by charter that they could be handled administratively. We've had to void a couple of appointments that aren't weren't necessarily ethics uh issues. They were administrative things that we just were, we looked in the charter, we were determined that we were able to avoid the appointment. And so it never really needed to be brought because it was not in a an official uh complaint, or it was being able to be addressed in that manner.
So going back to incompatible office thing, I know we had a discussion about that, so that wasn't considered an official complaint when I asked you about that?
So it not when we looked at it, it wasn't, we determined it was not in uh when we discussed it, we determined it wasn't, there wasn't an ethics violation.
There wasn't a conflict of interest?
There.
Negotiating between two organizations with two board members on both? Because I mean, that's like the definition of it.
For the for the parks or the parks, yeah, Parks Commission one when we discussed it. They as far as removal from office or anything like that, um we we that's when we talked about, we had to determine. When we were having the discussions about um what actually constitutes a conflict of interest. And that and I think those discussions, because of recent events, we've had to reengage those discussions as far as what that entails. Because at the time, we were under the understanding of if they don't personally financially benefit, um that was the initial and now.
Right, I get that, but you also can't in good faith negotiate with yourself on two different boards. So that's where the other conflict of interest would arise from it. So what if that still be an ethics violation?
Earn your money.
We've had a number of conversations, myself and and Tim about um. This very topic. Um, and. I think Tim has done a good job of summarizing the dilemma. Uh, someone can submit something that says this is an ethics complaint. It when in reality, it really has nothing to do with the ethics uh ordinance that you have in place. It may be a procedural issue, it may be something else. Um, this uh one that in particular that you're mentioning. I don't recall the specifics of that, um but it could be uh simply wrapped up in all the conversations that we've had about it. I know that there have been some requests, for example, um under FOIA to try to amass all the records of ethics complaints. And we've discussed it that um there really uh by our definition have only been maybe two. That uh have been presented to us. Those have been fully addressed and resolved and that others were not. So, you know, I I I'll talk to Tim about this particular one that you're mentioning, uh but it certainly has not gone by the wayside. It it's been, I don't know that we've really talked about anything other than those issues uh in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, so I mean, it's been like five months, almost six months now, so. And then we had other people that get ethics complaint and it's already seen the ethics board within a few days, which is why we had originally change it to give them a notice.
That's different. It came before council, not.
Right, right, but I mean, I just see a disparity between you have one ethics complaint that can be completely resolved within a couple of weeks and other ones taking five months. Which at least in my opinion, could have at least moved forward to you or council to discuss. Because when I read our charter, it seemed pretty clear that that was a conflict of interest negotiating between two bodies.
And this is what you're saying, that five months ago, you said that there.
Right, it was during the parks thing. Well, like, I don't think the township parks followed through on it with the swings. But those two members negotiating, I mean, at the both boards part, which.
Yes, and I and I know exactly what you're talking about and. I want to make sure that we don't use our ethics board and weaponize it against political perceived enemies. And to use it. Just as a cudgel against people. We're all going to make mistakes. People are going to make mistakes.
But that's gonna be from an incompatible board and then they would have to like remove themselves from one of the boards. That's where I would imagine that resolution would have ended up. Like, I don't think they were doing it in malice and I definitely don't have any kind of political agenda against either of those members. Like, I respect both of them. They do a lot.
But you're saying you put that in five months ago.
Yes, it was right after I watched the parks meeting. I immediately.
Because we didn't, that's what I've been something that's been discussed.
So I don't think Tim was at that meeting.
So it hasn't been determined that and make sure I'm asking this right, that village parks and township parks are incompatible offices? Am I asking the right question?
Right, because if they want to go into negotiation with each other for like purchasing each other's.
Right, so are those incompatible offices? Have we made a determination?
That's not something that I uh that I recall uh being on my plate. Now, Tim, Tim tells me that it it may have been bundled with some other uh requests that were sent my way. So I told him that I I would speak with him and uh at your next meeting, I'll make sure that uh it's it's resolved. I don't know about that a particular uh one.
Yeah, our our initial conversation of this and when we first, it was brought forward and that gave us a laundry list of like of of individuals that, you know. Alright, this person's on this, this, you know, how could these be? And so they were all presented at once and we went over that as well as specific examples. I would have to, I'll have to, I mean, we have records of all of our emails and such. We can go over and just see exactly where we're at, so.
I I would like I'd like to piggyback though on what Amber said because um I think it's happening. It may not be deliberate, but your ethics ordinances become really a cottage industry. That someone doesn't like something, it becomes an ethics complaint. And uh I I, you know, I know that that wasn't the intent behind it. And yet. You're not the only community that has adopted one and it's happened in both both places uh that that are mine. That every other week, there's a new ethics complaint about something and um that's, I think, why. We 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 probably need to tighten up the ordinances and really make uh clear.
Now, this doesn't even seem like an ethics issue, though. It seems if it's incompatible office act, our our.
Well, the ethics issue part of it comes from the conflict of interest, which is defined in our ethics ordinance.
I mean, if it's, they should just recuse themselves. What what should have happened?
You can't necessarily recuse yourself from that. That's something that's why it's an incompatible office. You're not supposed to negotiate about. The recusing would be being removed from that one of those boards, if I'm understanding.
Uh, yeah, and I don't know, I'm confused on that one because I know for some uh for for some boards, it is like that and for some things and then. For some things, people are permitted to recuse themselves, so I'm I'm not clear on the differences there.
Well, this one's like negotiating behalf of the two entities on the same.
If there's to be ongoing shared resources, contracts, that kind of thing, so that that would make sense.
Jim was buying something from the village and we had a vote on it, then he would recuse himself from that. Because then otherwise it would be a conflict for that. So that would be an example of recusing versus Jim negotiating, say he was on. Or like the case of like Richard White, he had a leave. So if we were in contract with the township, you can't negotiate on both sides.
Yeah, this specific instance, I'll I'll talk the specific instance, just so we're not using big. So on May seventh, the Parks Commission had a uh meeting where they were discussing the purchasing of parks equipment from township, the township board. A township parks board, which two of the parks at the time, two of the parks commission members were were on both boards. And they were negotiating the purchase of these equipments. Um, and then uh, you know, and then obviously um. Uh, Councilmember Ryan brought it brought forward, we discussed it and then um that led us to like, alright. Who are who else within our boards and commissions are in other offices that this might be an issue? And we had um and I was telling Mike, I was like, we've had a lot of conversations about, you know, not like. I mean, him and I talk, you know, several times a week about all the things, so I don't, you know, blame him for not remembering it because there's there's lots of uh. A lots of issues that we're having to clean up and address.
Now, one item, can the parks board even make decisions, though? Can they legally buy and sell stuff or does it come to council? Because if it has to come to council, then they're not. Yeah, so then they're not.
Yeah, we just make like recommendations to you guys.
If it's just a recommendation.
That's a good point. I I don't have.
But I understand like we're top, I understand where you're at. Which is why at the next meeting, I was like, hey, that can never happen again. Yeah. And that's what I believe before I move to an ethics necessarily, I believe in education first.
Well, actually, our ethics, our ethics uh ordinance states that um it's it's not necessarily a mandatory report. It's a mandatory intervention.
Yeah, and that can include education.
Yeah, like, so if you see something that's incorrect and you can address it at your level, we don't necessarily have to do an investigation. Like, it's, you know, that's how the actual ordinance is written and said.
This is where I'll share and and I won't say names. I'll just say that um the people involved there. Um, I informed one of them because Amber spoke with the other. I informed one of them of, you know, my um. My perception that that it was a conflict of interest and um that person did not agree. However, when it was time for reappointment, I'm. I did not serve a reappointment. I'm not going to reappoint people to boards that that might have conflicts of interest. I'd rather just get, you know, get somebody else on it where you don't have that kind of concern. Where you don't have to worry about recusing yourself often. So um I looked at that as a done deal, but it sounds like we're still looking into some of this, so.
I I more so than I want to make sure that we did the the follow up procedures for Councilmember Ryan. It brings up a complaint, like I have a responsibility to bring it, you know, if it's a, you know, a legitimate complaint. I have a responsibility to provide it to the Ethics Committee and they have a responsibility to take those reports if like determine illegitimate and all of these things to council. Um, but once it gets to them, you know, the the determinance been determination has been made that it is an ethics complaint. And there is a mandatory report when an actual ethics uh complaint comes up. Obviously, you know, there are, there is wiggle room within the ordinance um to allow to provide it, to try to keep it from being a. A witch hunt or a cottage industry as discussed, and we're trying to make sure that people aren't necessarily um. Their name's not dragged through the mud when we haven't had the chance to give them an opportunity to refute mitigate um a- any of the allegations. And I know we may have not done the best job of that in the past and, you know, it's something we're trying to clean up.
And quite frankly, this sucks. You know, the the whole reason that we wrote this is because previously council people were not protected because there was no ethics investigate investigatorial procedures. And so there was a witch hunt and a hanging all in one day and we wanted to prevent that and and now it just seems like it's, you know. If you want to make something into a weapon, you can.
Can we create like an official document for ethics complaints? So that way it's like there's one thing to look at. Here's the official complaint. It's not just like word of mouth or. Hey, I sent an email, my complaint, but maybe we should have like an official document for it.
It might require an amendment to the ordinance.
I don't know that the ordinance speaks to that specifically, but.
If that can be done administratively.
Yeah, I think it can be done administratively, sure. Um, and and, you know, I'll I'll close by really just suggesting that um, you know, perhaps that's a topic of conversation. Tightening up that ordinance a little bit to try to, you know, make sure that it stays true to what the intent was when you adopted it.
Yeah. And Thomas Ryan, anything else?
Um, nope, that was it from.
Okay. Wayne Brenner?
I just have a couple of questions. Number one question for Brian, our BGW director. Maybe he has a lot of talk on the street, Brian. Nothing against you, nothing. Do you got the backhoe out or cleaning up leaves off the? People just talking about it, you know?
It's not as loud as, the new one's not as loud, so people can't hear it.
Okay.
It's a ghost drone. Darn it.
And then I got one question for our chief again. Anything on the uh roadway down there by McDonald's? Any anything?
Apollo Drive?
Yeah, the uh.
Up on day.
Oddholes have been circled in red.
That just makes it better. Now we can see him.
Now they're dodging them like this, right?
We 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 actually discussed that in our department head uh meeting this morning is that uh chief has been uh working with the different property owners. It had like, there's several different people that kind of had a responsibility and he uh discussed it with all of them and said, you know. You will fix it. You'll fix it, you know, before the asphalt uh plants close at the end of the month. And so I guess that's your uh your timeline on it is that they've out, that's why it's been out there encircled is because they know what they need to repair and they have a timeline uh to have it done. You know, usually they close by deer season, but I think they're because of the warm weather, they're staying open a little bit longer, so they got a little bit more grace. Uh, is that a?
Accurate representation. When you have three entities that have a civil agreement together and they all want to point at the other one, then when I say collectively, will they all go to court? Then they found a way. So uh the it it is in process and uh and and actually they're doing it right. So I met with the contractor, there is a contractor that been hired, um and they all three of these entities are gonna pay for that. Uh, they have a process for that, so it should be uh underway. And uh they said they would have that done by the plants close and now we're looking at the end of the month.
Thank you, Jerry. Thanks, Brian.
Um, Cascola?
Thank you. Planning Commission did not meet. Finance Committee tried to meet, but we didn't meet.
I was there.
We were traveling and then our health intro.
We had Carmen Sandel over here.
Must be nice.
I want to thank Mr. Wendell. Um, so the plaques, my understanding, was all his idea.
Yes.
I got a phone call from uh Daniel one day. I'm like, oh, shoot, what does he want now? I was like.
Yeah, you gotta be careful when I call.
This time it was all goodwill, so that was all his idea, so he he was he was really thinking of all you guys, so and and the staff, so that was a very nice gesture. One comment to Miss for Miss Everly, she's not here, but uh when when we're looking at the court case, I called a couple of attorneys and I called one of them that uh. Court case for the dam. I called one of them, one of the attorneys that was representing, is it Whitefish or?
Uh, White Cloud.
White Cloud, yeah, White Cloud up north. And I said, well, we have a a a dam study by SME and she goes, well, SME is not a a dam company. They don't do dam surveys. They do engineering for earth. So she said we had a dam survey in twenty twenty one, but we didn't have a dam survey by an engineering company that does dams, so whatever that.
Dammit.
Yeah, however that makes sense. I am excited for the special meeting for the, uh, on Monday. I, I do have some, uh, other comments regarding that. I, I'd like to make them there, but I know you listen to Manager Price, you can't really make comments there or talk about other things that are on, on the agenda. I was a little shocked to see that there, that DDA is now proposing an eighteen thousand dollar budget for law fee, when our budget as a whole village is almost twenty. So, we may have, I don't know where we're at currently. Uh, we have a lot of fees for the dam, you have to imagine that adds it up, but we budgeted for twenty thousand for the entire village. And I think it's a huge waste for our taxpayers because it's called information silos. We have an attorney, they have an attorney, and our attorneys aren't talking. So, if we want to know something, our attorney has to call their attorney. Our attorney costs one fifty an hour or one seventy-five, their attorney costs two fifty an hour. So, now we're filling our residents, who's good at math? All, thank you. All that money for them to talk, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And, um, reading over our charter and, uh, ordinances and other municipal law and, I think there is a solution. I think one of the things we've overlooked is, um, it may be possible, and Mr. Gilmore hopefully will weigh on this, weigh in on this on the future, that we would be able to set an ordinance that says all legal services must be handled by the village attorney. And there's precedents in other communities they do this. And the way I was looking at this, could you imagine right now if Manager Price says, well, I want an attorney? And then Brian says, well, I want an attorney. Right now, our ordinance or our charter says the only people that have the attorney, it's the council's attorney. And I think we could save our taxpayers a ton of money, bring it all in-house, and, and, and then we're done. I have been, uh, lobbying, I guess, I guess the right term, for, uh, changes in the DDA. I had been contacting with, uh, Chair, Chairwoman Stouffer, um, and also our, our board members about it, and I was trying to relay some of my thoughts and stuff. Uh, I was a little dismayed when, um, Chairwoman Stouffer said it was inappropriate for me to contact her members, uh, trying to sway their votes, and because that's exactly what I was doing. I was trying to sway their votes. I have an opinion, and I would like them to vote a certain way, and I think I can help someone learn something, and I have a lot of knowledge in my head, and I would love to share it with people, so. And, and I hope that if a resident of our community wants to contact me and say, hey, you're doing something wrong, or this is something you can do better, please, contact me. That would be, that would be amazing. So, um, yeah, I think, I think there's some, some dilemmas there with the, with the DDA, and it seems like, seems like to me, the, the part of the issue is it's the DDA being an instrument of the village. The, the, there's members of the DDA that are still saying, village has financial problems. Well, you're part of the village. And there's other DDAs which literally say, for, for instance, they write a check every year for a hundred fifty thousand bucks. The DDA says, here's money, take it. So, I would, I would love that cooperation for our residents here. I don't, I don't think we're getting that right now, so. Hopefully, this special meeting is the start of something good.
Thank you, Tim. Um, me. So, um, as DDA liaison, um, we had a meeting on Monday. We went over, you, you saw there were some, some items on there for budget amendments, but we have to put that off for the tip plan and see what we're legally allowed to do. But I, I was going to say, I'm pleased to inform you about a meeting, but everyone stole my thunder on that. So, um, yeah, next, next Monday at six forty-five, um, they, they were all excited about it. Um, let's see, for a simple piece of budget transparency, these plaques are not paid for with village taxpayer money. These are paid for personally by council. It's not coming out of your taxes.
Yeah, we all chipped in a little bit, made it possible.
That's all on that. And then, um, let's see, uh, my last note, we, uh, we lost a staple. Ed Coleman, our community lost a truly good man on October thirtieth. Ed Coleman, longtime owner of Coleman and Son's Garage, was fair, honest, and hardworking as they come. He was one of those rare people who made things simple. He would literally just show up to your house with your car when it's ready, send you a text, and I hope you're ready to come outside because he's ready to drive you back to the shop. No fuss, no fanfare, just quiet reliability and kindness. He took pride in his work and treated everyone with respect. Holly is a better place because I was part of it. Deepest condolences to his family, friends, and all who were lucky enough to know him.
Can we take a moment of silence for him?
Yes, please. Can we have a moment of silence? Thank you. Um, do I have a, let's see, where are we? Is it to go into closed session? So, if that concludes reports, do I have a motion to go into, or Lisa, can you read the, uh, closed session item, please? I guess that's letter E now?
Yes.
Consideration of Village Council to enter into closed session to discuss the village attorney's written legal memorandum and to approve closed session minutes from the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting pursuant to open meetings act two seventy-six of nineteen seventy-six.
And specifically, my letter is dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five regarding appraisal. And that would be the basis for closed session request.
Okay. Do I have a first to enter into closed session?
I'll make the motion to enter into closed session.
Motion by Wendell?
I'll second.
Second by Weinbrunner. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Tyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes. Motion carried? Okay.